It's five o'clock, so this regular meeting of the Carefree Town Council will come to order. Please take a silent roll call, and I believe the Vice Mayor is on the phone, or not?
Yes, can you ask her if she can hear you? Voice, man.
Okay, there's a little bit of a delay, but okay, she can, obviously, she can hear us. Very good. Ms. Arian Buser, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Your hand over here. The flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, thank you. And I would just remind everyone, council included, when you come up, when you speak, or if you come up to the podium to speak, please be loud and clear so the folks at home can hear you, or YouTube picks you up. First on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. All items listed hereunder are considered to be routine by the Town Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be discussed separately. Number one, approval of the February 4th, 2025 Town Council Regular Meeting Minutes. Item two, approval of check register report for the month of February 2025. Number three, approval of the combined trial balance, all funds dated December 31st, 2024. Number four, proclamation of National Vietnam War Veterans Day, March 29th, 2025. Item five, approval of road closure and tapering north of Sentinel Rock Road for the Cave Creek Rodeo Parade. So I'd like to pull item number five. Anyone would like to pull any of the other items? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve items one, two, three, and four.
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda, items one through four.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Item number five, item five is approval of road closure and tapering north of Sentinel Rock Road for the Cave Creek Rodeo. So we need a little bit more detail, and I'm going to share that with you. So the date for this is Saturday, March 22nd, from 5:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So anyone have any questions about that? I think it's pretty straightforward. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve Consent Agenda, item number five.
Motion to approve Consent Agenda, item number five.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passed unanimously. Thank you. Current events. So our next Carefree Conversations is going to be this coming Friday, March 7th. So we moved it up a week. Usually it's on the second Friday, this time it'll be on the first Friday. It's in the Pavilion, San Francisco Pavilion, under the awning. So rather than doing in the visitor center, we'll be outside in the, in the, in the farmer's market, we'll have a table. So council members, Diane Lloyd Roth will join me, and Sheila Amarosa. Second item, Coffee with a Cop. So on Wednesday, April 9th, at Black Mountain Coffee Shop, from 8:00 till 10:00 a.m., we'll have Captain Latourneau, and many of his, his men will be there, because usually we get four or five of them. And it's really a great opportunity for them to brief us on what's going on, and for you to ask questions about whatever's on your mind. It's like one-on-one, it's great. So it's, I don't know, about five weeks from now, but Wednesday, April 9th, at the Black Mountain Coffee Shop. So please make a note of it. And then this coming Saturday, we have another garden seminar, the third one. It's called Desert Top Hits, Plants for Success, a lot of great ideas about plants that'll survive in the desert. So it's here in the Town Council Chamber, Saturday, the 8th of March, begins at 9:30. Also, this is important to note, starting in April, Planning and Zoning Commission meetings will start at 4:00 p.m. rather than 5:00 p.m. So that was a decision taken by the Commission at your last, last meeting, and we'll just see how that works out. But make a note of it, as you're going to miss the first hour. And then lastly, in every spring, we have, Rural Metro works with our water, water company, and they inspect the fire hydrants. So beginning on March 10th, probably through the month of April, you'll see, you'll see them out there flushing the hydrants. So that helps them make sure they work, and it helps them remember where they are. So if you see them, they'll give them a wide berth if they're on the roads, but also it's a great time, also, just talk to them, chat them up, if you have questions. They're always happy to talk to you and let you know what they're, what they're working on and what they're thinking. So does anyone else have any other current events to share? Okay, great, hearing none, we'll close current events. Item number seven, review, discussion, and possible action to approve Resolution 2025-05, renewal of contract for Tara E. Paris Condola, the presiding magistrate to the Carefree Cave Creek Consolidated Municipal Court, under the terms set forth in the resolution. So Judge, I would invite you to just come on up and let us know how things are going, and tell us about this resolution.
Absolutely.
It's great to see you, thank you.
Great to see you. Mayor, Vice Mayor I know is on the phone, and members of the Town Council, thank you for having me here this evening. After having the honor of serving the towns of Carefree and Cave Creek for the past four years, as your Presiding Judge, I am requesting that you renew my contract for another four-year term. I appreciate the time to give you a little bit more information about my role and the essential role of the court in this community. As a court, my staff and I prioritize the administration of justice in a fair and efficient manner while treating all court users with dignity, patience, and respect. Our court users primarily include victims, defendants, police officers, witnesses, juveniles and their parents or guardians, attorneys, and interpreters. They include persons from all walks of life, including professionals, students, veterans, persons with behavioral health issues, or persons experiencing homelessness. An independent, fair, and impartial judiciary is essential in our system of justice. As a court, my staff and I pride ourselves on the way in which we interact with and towards all court users. The integrity with which we act is imperative to preserving the principles of justice and the rule of law. Through our actions, we strive to maintain and enhance confidence in the legal system. We are entrusted by the public to perform a very essential and important duty, and we respect and honor that duty. As the only judge of the Carefree Cave Creek Consolidated Court, I'm responsible for handling of all civil, criminal misdemeanors, and juvenile matters filed within our court, as well as any requests for emergency petitions, such as orders of protection and injunctions against harassment. As a consolidated court, our court's jurisdictions include matters that occur within the boundaries of both the towns of Cave Creek and Carefree. Civil cases include possible violations of either town codes, as well as civil traffic offenses, such as speeding, failing to yield, lack of requiring, required documents, such as registration and insurance. Civil offenses carry a possible punishment, such as a civil penalty or sanction, fine. Civil tickets are addressed by either a contested civil hearing, payment of the sanction, or diversion driving course, if eligible. Criminal misdemeanors include violations of the Arizona Revised Statute. They include DUI, domestic violence offenses, theft and shoplifting offenses, as well as many others. Criminal citations, depending on the class of misdemeanor, can result in fines, probation, requirements to participate in educational classes or treatment, as well as jail. Criminal misdemeanors are addressed by either a trial or a plea agreement. It may, may necessitate the appointment of counsel if the defendant is indigent, as determined by federal poverty guidelines. Our case numbers last year alone were more than double the previous year. In 2023, that calendar year, total filings were 846. In 2024, we had a total of 1,940 filings. Our case numbers we have so far, just for a portion of 2025, so the, only the months of January and February is 389. If this pace continues, we anticipate seeing filings much higher than last year as well. As a municipal court, we're under the jurisdiction of the Arizona Supreme Court, and are required to follow and implement any rule changes and orders that derive from that authority. As the Presiding Judge, my duties also include, but are not limited to, adherence to all Supreme Court mandates, the supervision of all court personnel, responsibility for the accurate receipt and disbursement of money pursuant to minimum accounting standards, as well as the proper processing of all cases according to the law. These obligations require my physical presence in court, as well as additional hours responding to written motions, addressing court legal matters, drafting all policies and procedures, researching and writing all necessary updates to comply with the law, and compiling reports for the Administrative Office of the Courts, which is, which is an arm of the Arizona Supreme Court. The court operating hours are 8:00 to 4:30, Monday through Friday, which means I'm responsible for being available and addressing any matters that are presented during those hours. Although my position is technically part-time, my responsibility and availability... Like all city and town courts, we are not exempt from any of the rule changes, procedures, and data capturing requirements that must be implemented by our governing authority. For instance, since the beginning of my contract, I've had to implement and then completely dismantle the many procedural and policy changes due to COVID measures as required by law, perform a detailed overhaul of the civil traffic bond card as required by the significant changes we had in civil traffic law, respond to and draft a policy to adhere to the Plan B, which refers to virtual appearances requirement, as well as address yearly changes to the criminal code that impact our operating procedures. During this time period, there has also been significant changes in court personnel. These changes have been due to a variety of reasons. Among them, a strong labor market, employee desires for alternative and flexible schedules which we cannot offer, retirement, and the pursuitment, pursuit of advancement opportunities that are only available in bigger courts. Changes in staff present the issues involving the attraction, retention, motivation, and training to ensure a competent, cohesive group committed to excellence. As far as my position as a contractor, I do not receive any of the benefits of an employee position. However, as a point of reference, associate full-time judges in the valley have a base pay in the range of $179, or $175,900 to $237,000. The average rate of pay, and this is the base rate, 217,0091. This base rate does not include monetary benefits that are in addition to that base rate, such as employer contributions to deferred compensation, vehicle and communication allowances, as well as accrual of vacation and sick days, medical coverage, dental coverage, as well as, of course, pension benefits. On average, these benefits translate to a 25% to 30% increase in the base rate received. Associate judges, and those are the judges I'm talking about in terms of that rate that they receive, are judges that are not responsible for any administration of the court in which they work. They are instead supervised by an associate presiding and/or presiding judge. Their obligations consist solely of the addressing their caseload, interpreting and implying the law, and ensuring proper procedures are being followed in their courtroom. These are all functions that I am responsible for, in addition to my many administrative responsibilities. As a pro temp judge since 2017, your judge since 2021, and a criminal attorney for the past 26 years, the rate of compensation, I would argue, should be commensurate with experience, workload, as well as current market pay. And just for those members who are not as familiar with me or my background, I will let you know, over the 26 years as an attorney, I've worked on death penalty cases, I've handled major felony caseloads, including high-profile cases, handled countless misdemeanor cases, have represented numerous clients in jury and bench trials, handled cases in courts all over the state, and have handled cases in specialty courts and have handled specialty caseloads. When I say specialty courts, specialty caseloads, I'm talking about mental health clients, I'm talking about veterans courts, and I'm talking about homeless courts and juvenile matters. I have handled all of those, I've also prosecuted. As a judge in Tempe, I've handled a variety of different dockets, including and primarily their in custody or prisoner docket. I have volunteered in a variety of capacities, such as their veterans stand-down. I've taught, I've done updates for the Administrative Office of the Court for their bench books that are used in trainings all over the state. As a judge, I've also volunteered at the Regional Homeless Court, and of course, I have the experience that I have here in Carefree. So that, just, just to give you a little bit of information about my background, over the past four years, the court has succeeded under my leadership. I've proven my worth, value, and skills, and my commitment to advancing justice in two very diverse and different communities. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I'm happy to address any questions you may have for me.
Well, thank you, Judge. And I would just say, the court is every Tuesday morning, and if you haven't gone, you can just go in the back and sit, and you can just watch how, how the court works. You run a, a great operation.
Thank you.
And the auditors would say the same thing. You get audited every year, and we get great reports. Those audits are done by the state, who does the audits?
We have, there's two different audits. Yearly, we actually participate in the financial audit that's conducted, and then on, depending on when we fall on their timeline, we're actually audited, it's an operational audit that's done by the Administrative Office of the Court. So that looks well beyond just the finances of the court.
Right, you always get great scores, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
So, okay, council, I'll open up the council for questions and comments.
Oh, go ahead.
Sam Rosa.
What percentage of the cases are Carefree, and what percentage Cave Creek?
Um, as far as, I don't have an exact number for you in terms of the amount of cases. I would have to look back, actually, at the, because we do provide a monthly report for the court, for the council, excuse me, council member. As far as what percentage of each court is handled, I, of course, it's, I'm, everyone's the same in front of me, whether they're from Carefree or Cave Creek, so, but we do keep track and have those numbers available, and I could, I could provide those for you in specifics.
And has there been an increase in criminal as opposed to traffic, the majority traffic?
Um, I would say that there's been an increase, and our increases have certainly been seen in the civil traffic area, because I think of the enforcement that has been taking place in, and I would say in both towns.
Exactly, both towns have stepped up their traffic enforcement, no question.
Hi, thank you for your time tonight. Can you tell me, in terms, you were describing your responsibilities, and if you were, obviously, at a, a bigger court, you would maybe be focusing on one type of, one type of cases versus doing criminal, and then child, and homeless, and all these, is that the way it would work in general, but you're doing pretty much everything?
Yes, I, Councilmember, I would say, yes, I am doing everything here. And in other courts, depending on the jurisdiction, they are primarily focusing on a specific type of caseload. Usually it's divided. So in some courts, for example, the criminal, they'll be, have criminal judges who are only handling criminal cases. And they'll have, say, hearing officers who are going to be handling their orders of protection, that are going to be handling for their civil traffic offenses, and all that's encompassed with those types of matters. I would say, even in some of the biggest courts, they, there are criminal judges who that is primarily their caseload. However, once in a while, they provide coverage for other attorneys, or not other attorneys, but other judges. And if a judge calls in sick, for example, someone needs to go cover the civil docket, or someone needs to cover the walk-ins for orders of protection injunctions against harassment. But yes, they're usually focused on a specific type, with the behavioral health courts, with the veterans courts, that's usually a very much an assigned duty that other judges will get, maybe get involved in just for, on a temporary basis.
Can you explain the process for when you're not available, and say you want to take a vacation, and then you have to bring somebody in, and then if they hit a certain amount of hours, like what, how that works?
Sure. Um, as far as, what I usually do is, one, I avoid, to the best of my ability, taking any vacation on my court day, just so I don't have to obtain coverage for the court. If I do have to obtain coverage for the court, and that's typically going to be an emergency situation, perhaps I'm sick, what have you, it hasn't happened, but if I need to do that, we have pro temp judges. Those are judges that serve on a temporary basis, that could come in for, you know, a few hours to cover the court as necessary. So we do have that procedure available, I just don't, I try to do everything to avoid implementing that, just for the cost of it, and, and I can schedule things around the court date.
So when you say that you're on call, kind of, you know, from 8:00 to 4:30?
Right.
What, what things arise that you have to jump in, and, I mean, is that something you can say, do, do you, do you come into the office every day? I'm sorry, I don't know.
I do not.
Okay.
And what I can do, thankfully, because we have the ability, when I say on call, it's basically any questions that are coming from court staff on how to deal with a specific type of question. I'm also getting motions. Motions are written requests from defendants, and we receive quite a few of those. Whether it may be someone who has a civil traffic ticket, they have a specific court date, they need a continuance. They need, and the only person who can rule on those motions is me. So it's sent to me to look at, if it's a criminal case, then I need to make sure court, court staff has reached out to the prosecutor to find out their position on whatever motion may have been presented to the court. But there is a lot of written correspondence from folks who are, you know, I take the position of, I'm not going to make someone wait a long time, if at all, to get a response. A lot of times, these are done because they're trying to avoid missing court, or they're trying to avoid missing a deadline, things of that nature, and I want to be as responsive as possible, as quickly as possible.
So would you say that a lot of the responsibilities that you're just available for and can come up, would those responsibilities be the same if you were at a large court where you had a larger staff that handled some of that, or?
Um, I would say yes, in terms of, a lot of times, motions that are filed may be handled on just a motion docket. So they have judges who will just address motions that are, have been filed with the court. It really, again, it's, it's, it's different in each jurisdiction in terms of how they, their division of labor, and how they divide those things up. I know most judges would like to rule on the motions that are in their court and that are, that they're handling.
And you, did you say there were 1,900 cases last year?
Yes, as far as for the calendar year, there were 19, and I think, 1940, yeah, 1,940.
Good, any other questions, any other questions from the council? Right ahead.
So are you paid equally by us in Cave Creek?
As it currently stands, no.
And maybe, Gary, you can elaborate on this, and this is the Carefree Consolidated, Carefree Cave Free Consolidated Court. We operate the court, we pay the employees.
Correct.
Including the judge.
That is correct, Mayor. All the compensation associated with the court, including public defender, as you recall, last month, we reviewed the contract of the public defender, the judge's contract, interpreter contract, the salary and benefits, all come out of the operational budget for the town of Carefree. However, the town of Cave Creek pays us approximately $200,000 a year for a service fee to operate the court. In addition, there's revenue that comes back in the form of fines. About two-thirds of the fines go to the county and the state, about one-third comes back to local jurisdictions. So we do receive about $160,000 to $170,000 in fines. All that offsets the salaries and compensation for the respective contracts.
And, and the court is housed in the Cave Creek Town Council Chambers.
Correct.
Including the offices for the, for the staff.
So their contribution is basically like, we're renting there for zero.
Correct. So the judge is, you know, she runs, you run a very good court, you're proven, you've proven your value over and, to me, over and over again. And I think when someone goes into the court, often they're from our town, or Cave Creek, or probably more often than that, they're not. And so to have, essentially, to have a good experience, if you can have a good experience in a courtroom, that's what, part of what you deliver.
Thank you, that's something, Mayor, and members of the Town Council and Vice Mayor, like I said, that is something that we absolutely prioritize, is just in terms of treating everyone with dignity and respect, so that everyone knows they will receive a fair shake in terms of appearing before the court, and there's no reason for us not to treat them in that fashion.
Exactly. Any other comments from council?
Yeah, just a comment, as, as I read your compensation, and all of what you do, you're providing a great value.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, council member.
Okay, hearing no other comments, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2025-05, Contract for Services as Presiding Magistrate of the Cave, Carefree Cave Creek Consolidated Municipal Court. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution 2025-05, Contract for Services as Presiding Magistrate of the Carefree Cave Creek Consolidated Municipal Court.
Second.
Any other comments before we vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Very good presentation, and glad to have you onboard for another four.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and all members of the council, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Okay, item number eight, review, discussion, and possible action to approve Resolution 2025-06, Authorizing the Mayor to Sign the First Amendment to the Development Agreement with CCS Crossroads LLC. Mr. Popapek.
Mayor, council, I'm glad to be able to, to talk about the project a little bit today, but this amendment is really about, when we went through and approved the development agreement back in November of 2024, one of the things that the council also approved was the, the town administrators' capability to further amend and negotiate for a maintenance agreement, as well as the insurance provisions that were provided in the, in the agreement. And if you remember, in that agreement, there were two, two kinds of agreements, there was a development agreement, and as an exhibit to that, there was a wash maintenance agreement. And so the development agreement set kind of the standards for what the developers' responsibilities are in total. The wash agreement was what their responsibilities are to the wash improvements. And those wash improvements included the, the trail, the wash, the relocation of the wash, the banks of the wash, the landscape, and inside of that was the, the toe of the wash, or the, I'm sorry, the bed of the wash, which is kind of that area we describe as toe-to-toe, and that would be the very bottom of the wash to the very bottom of the wash, and in that, there are certain structures. And that wash then connects into culverts that come from Carefree Highway and into Cave Creek Road. And so as we started going through the discussions on both the insurance provisions and through the wash discussion, it was clear that- the wash discussion, it was clear that, you know, through demonstration that there was one type of insurance that couldn't be provided by an insurance provider, and that was insure, flood insurance for the wash. And it is kind of difficult to provide insurance for a wash that is designed to handle floods. So, so that was stricken from, that's one of the amendments that we've made. But what really precipitated us coming back and seeking council approval was the, the maintenance agreement. And inside the, the development agreement, it stated that the developer was responsible for one hundred percent of all of the wash improvements for the entire period of the time that the wash and the project exists in perpetuity. And as we had this conversation, and we were trying to figure out, like, what's the best strategy for certain things to be maintained over time, it was becoming obvious, it was difficult for the developer to be able to, you know, after they sell the project and it goes to, you know, an association, and other people come in and, and different lots are purchased and bought, that over time, that it may not be in the best interest to have them service specifically that toe-to-toe portion there of the wash. And so they came back and asked if the town would work with them on being responsible for that. And, and the deal that we came up with was that during the incentive period, they would maintain all of the wash. They were going to install it and do everything. And then at the time the incentive agreement or incentive period ends, the developer then, we would go in, we'd have a period where we'd evaluate that everything's fine, and then, then we would evaluate that, and then that would be turned over to us as far as our responsibility, which also, which really allows us to have continuity, because we would have been taking care, for the most part, at the end of the day, looking at culverts under the roads, things that are a part of, of what are in the public right away. And this allows us to ensure that the wash is going to be maintained in perpetuity, you know, as, as the town goes. And as far as cost and maintenance, you know, we have the equipment, we have the crews, we do wash and maintenance in, in other locations. And, and so, Gary, I don't know if you want to talk just a little bit about, you know, our capabilities and how that, you know, and really the, the minimal cost that we anticipate over time.
Yeah, certainly after storm events, you see our Public Works crew going out and cleaning the streets and culverts. This would be the same type of, of work being performed, and so they would clean out the sedimentation to make sure that, that culvert that goes underneath Cave Creek Road, that is currently approximately three quarters filled right now, is essentially a hundred percent clean. So we can control what goes into that culvert by collecting the sedimentation at the bed of that wash. We also have some interest from an MS four and inspection requirements by the state. This will be land that will be under the town's ownership in the future, and so the Stormwater Pollution Act requires us to oversee the maintenance of this. So as prescribed by the state and the federal government, this would be part of our MS four requirements, so we have a vested interest in maintaining it.
So what you'll be voting on is, is, is an amendment to the agreement that would allow for the exhibit, for the O and M, that'll be, that's been amended as well, but that's part of the, of the agreement. So as we stated, that any amendment to the agreement needs to come before council, even if it's as, as small as something as this, we just want to make sure that we're, we're going through the proper procedures and, and giving as much information to the public as, as well, of what's going on with this particular project. I do have Marty Weinstein here with Diversified Partners, if there's any questions regarding, you know, if you have of the developer at this time as well.
Okay. Well, first, are there any questions from the council on the modifications to the agreement?
I just would say, it's, seems like this is what we already do anyway, and it's our responsibility, so it seems to be the natural course of action.
Yeah, I agree. Anyone else? Okay.
Yeah, the insurance. So they're going to maintain it, or they can't get it, so we're going to do the insurance the whole time?
Yeah, so there's really no flood insurance available for this type of act, like a wash, is, is what the, Marty, I don't know if you have any additional information that Scott provided you, or Dennis, if you wanted to chime in.
But are we paying, are they going to reimburse us for the cost of insurance?
There's no insurance.
During there?
There is no insurance at all.
So no insurance at all?
Yeah, yeah, so there's no insurance that's, that could be provided at the commercial level.
So essentially, they will self-insure in the first, during the
Correct.
First five years, or whatever it works out to.
And then we take over after that?
Yes.
And this is part of our umbrella policy that we have with Southwest Risk. There's really no incremental increase, it's just what they do in providing insurance to municipalities. So we will be insured through our Southwest Risk policy.
Any other questions? So Dennis, if we vote on this now, can we still bring up the representative from developer to talk about status of the development, or do I have to wait until?
You have to.
Okay. So if there's no more direct questions from Mr. Popapek, I'd invite you to come on up and just tell us what's going on with the development and where you stand. Thank you. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Happy to be here. I'm going to go on my tippy toes.
We can fix that.
Okay, great. So I'm the retail leasing broker, so my role within the development is to bring tenants to the table and make the project the best it could possibly be. But I do know that we're in the midst of battling building costs and trying to make the buildings and the elevations look the best that they can while making sure the project can still pencil. And I, I am told that we are in the midst of several rounds of discussions around that. It's no secret that the property across the street is our number one competition at the intersection, and we are fighting time to make sure that we can secure the best tenants possible to the project. So we need to find a more efficient path to getting everybody what they need as it relates to building elevations. So I know that's something that's been holding us up. And then separate from that, you know, the, if you look at our project, it's three buckets of development. We've got a parcel east of Fifty-Sixth Street, we've got a parcel at the Hard Corner, and we've got a parcel north of the wash along Cave Creek Road. Development environment today doesn't yield office development, it's just not happening, no matter where, no matter what town you're in. And it would really help us if we were able to get retail uses approved on that parcel. We're seeing that there is demand for that in the area. So, yeah, I guess what I'd say is, overall, the project leasing activity has been healthy. We are absolutely competing with the parcel across the street. They're able to, every, every, every site has its own development challenges. That site doesn't have a wash running through it, amongst other things. And so we, we're trying to make it as easy as possible to do deals at our site for the tenants that are coming to the table, and trying to move as efficiently as possible. So as far as some of the users that are coming to the site, I'd say it's a slew of restaurants, service businesses, anything you'd see in a grocery anchored center. We are trying to land a grocery store. That is not finalized yet, but it is something that we're working toward, and we're hopeful that we can make more announcements in the next sixty to ninety days, I would say, on deals that we can announce to the public, so.
Okay, so, I mean, from, from the town's perspective, this development agreement was brought to us, we voted on it as soon as it was, could be voted upon in December, and we did that, and tonight, we modified this as quick as we could to, to, to work with you. So when you talk about the elevations being in the critical path, what's the issue? Who's, who's, who's holding you up?
Well, my architect, or our architect that's point on this could speak to that more diligently, but I do know that where we're running into an impasse is the design guidelines and trying to make the buildings look as nice as they can while also making them affordable for us to build. So I guess following this, I would encourage a meeting as soon as possible with whomever from our team, our architect, and whoever from the town's perspective is involved in this, so that we can try and get that approved quickly to not hold up the process.
So did you misjudge the cost of that?
No. So the cost of construction is an ongoing target for us. Any developer will tell you, just, it's, it's been a challenge coming out of COVID, truly, just supply chain and cost of lumber and steel and wood.
No, understandable.
Yeah, so, no, I mean, you know, we have a general barometer for typically what a building would cost to build. In this case, we have additional accentuating circumstances and looking at the overall proforma of the development, one of them being the wash. Amongst other things, there's some grading issues on the site, there's things that are, we have additional costs that we typically wouldn't have.
No, I mean, we're all, we're all aware of that.
Yeah.
Because we entered into a, an agreement with you on that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so I don't know why that, like, that, to me, that's over. And now we're moving forward, so why say a potential tenant would be worried about the wash is, I don't understand that.
I'm sorry, I, I think we're miscommunicating.
Okay.
Yeah, as it relates to the building elevations, is that?
Well, you had mentioned something about the challenges, I thought you said something about the challenges of, of bringing in people with.
She, she did say that the other side doesn't have a wash, and we're dealing with a wash, and that's why we're paying forty-nine percent of the fee for that, so.
They're able to strike more economic deals, I guess, is what I, in, in short, right? They can, they can do deals at a discount because they don't have additional costs, that, that developer. So it's, it's challenging, because we've got great tenants coming to the table that want to be at our site, and we're, we're making, trying to make economic deals with them, and then the guy across the street can do it for less than half. So, I'm exaggerating, but you understand the point of what I'm saying.
But what, a couple things. So this is kind of a known. We've known about the wash, we've known about the other corner, everyone's trying to get to it as quickly as they can. We want the nicest corner that we can have, and hopefully that means we get better tenants. I think at the end of the day, they're going to prefer to be on our corner versus the Cave Creek corner, all things being equal. So I know everyone's trying to go as fast as they can, and you guys were talking about some vendors a while back, but it seems like that kind of keeps moving out. So now you're saying maybe like sixty, ninety days, where before, when I was speaking with you guys, it was, oh, once everything's signed, within a couple weeks, excuse me, a couple weeks, we'll name five to six, then another thirty, sixty, we'll have that. But we're not really hearing anything on that front. So do you have any, and can you say, the ones that you have there signed? Because I understand with the competition, you don't want to say who you're talking to and then have Cave Creek go grab them, right? But do you have any that you've signed that you can share with the group?
We have five or six deal, we have one lease signed with Nothing Bunt Cakes. It's an inline shop tenant, they sell delicious bund cakes, I'm sure everyone will enjoy those. And we have six leases behind it that I'm confident will be executing in the next, probably close forty-five days, no later than forty-five days. And those leases, I can't, I can't speak to the, I guess what I can say is, they're a combination of restaurants and retail, large-scale retail.
Why forty-five days? I mean, why so long? I'm just, everyone wants to move so fast, why is it so long?
You know, we're dealing with corporate real estate folks in different parts of the country that are looking at fifty leases at a time, ours being one of them, and, you know, we, we move very quickly on our side, but we can't control how fast the tenants are moving on their side. So it's, it's, it's just, you know, it's, unfortunately, everyone moves really quickly to this stage, and leases can take several months to negotiate. So everyone's trying to move as fast as they can. We'd love to make these announcements sooner than later.
So I would just say, when we, a couple of things. When, when we approved the zoning, we included, I'm not sure what the right word is, but some standards of architecture, is that the right word? Standards of elevation?
Some guidelines and stipulations, yes.
So they're not a surprise to anyone, and we would expect them to be met. I mean, it's just a fact. On the parcel C where there's the office zoning is, we would certainly entertain changing that, but it's up to the property owner to work with the, the neighborhood there, Ironwood Estates, and I think if you, they are, I know they're willing to work with you, just going to mind their interests, and then bring an application to us, and that's how it's solved. So if it's in the critical path, just got to solve it.
Okay. Great.
Any other comments? Okay, well, thank you very much for the explanation and the update.
Thank you for your time.
I have one other question for, for Dennis, and this is kind of in the weeds, but I've been asked this twice this week, in this, one of these agreements that talks about Charles the Third, King of England's children and all this other stuff. Why is that in there?
Because, or, Mr. Mayor, the, the, the maintenance obligations go on perpetually, and typically contracts can't be perpetually, especially contracts for land, so there's something called the Rule Against Perpetuities that avoids contracts involving land going on perpetually. So we have it in there just in case it ever gets challenged, add, under the Rule Against Perpetuities, because the obligation goes for so long. So if it ever gets challenged that way, that's our fallback, which would be, contract would go along as King Charles's children and grandchildren. Their lives plus twenty-one years. That's the Rule Against Perpetuities. Today, the heat of the night, there's a Rule Against Perpetuities.
Okay, is that clear to everyone?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you. I'll, I'll take your word for it. All right. Any other questions or comments, Mr. Popapek?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I just wanted to kind of follow up to what Marty was stating, and I, you know, and I think, and I've had this conversation with them regarding, you know, announcing tenancy and, and the timing of tenancy and getting leases signed, and, and there's two things, I think, that, you know, that we need to think about when she talks about cost comparisons from one site to the next. That site has been owned by the same individual for a very long period of time with a very low basis in cost, and I'm sure the family who took over for that, inherited that, you know, their, their basis is, is fairly low. And so I know that's one of the things that you deal with. The other side of it is, is that when you're in a competitive mode and you have a tenant that comes in, let's say that other site wasn't in the mix, right? And that somebody wants to be in this location, well, it's a lot easier for them to say, well, that's the site I'm going to sign a lease at. But when they've got two things to, to consider, they got to send that back to her point to their corporate headquarters, they got to make decisions, they got to look at economics, and so it does probably create some timing issues as far as them evaluating two locations that are right, almost adjacent to each other. But I do agree with you that at some level, or I think it was Councilmember Skirty, that, you know, we've, we've got the better site, you walk up and you look at it, it's all things being equal. And I do want to say that I know Stacy has been working very diligently in, in the planning.
Could you just speak into the microphone? I said to your level.
I'm sorry, it's, I keep hearing in feedback, so I'm trying to not get the feedback.
The microphone is pointing in another direction.
Yeah.
The mouse is pointing up.
Yeah. So, you know, the, the planning director has been working very diligently, I see, because I'm getting feedback now, on this particular project to make sure that it can get through the process. But to your point, you know, there, there is existing zoning and there existing design guidelines that just simply are, are the hard line that we have to meet, and it's just, that's what she, I know she's working through, and so everybody's working diligently to get through those issues, but I think, you know, if there's a way that we can all come together to expedite this conversation, we're all willing to do that.
Okay. Anything else from council members? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero six.
Mr. Mayor, just so you know, the wash here is an exhibit to the development agreement, so you'll be, if it's approved, you'll be approving the amendment to the development agreement and the washing agreement.
Correct. Yes, understood. So this is a resolution of the council, the town of Carefree, Mayor Copa County, Arizona, authorizing the mayor to execute the First Amendment to a Maintenance Agreement for Wash Improvements in accordance with the Development Agreement, Carefree Quarter between the town of Carefree and CCS Crossroads LLC in the Carefree Quarter Association in Arizona, and Arizona Nonprofit Corporation. Have a motion?
How about, motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh six, authorizing the mayor to sign the First Amendment to the Development Agreement with CCS Crossroads LLC.
Which also includes the wash.
Also including the wash, sorry.
Second.
Any comments before we vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you, and thank you for coming out tonight. Item number nine, Fiscal Year twenty twenty-five dash twenty twenty-six Economic Outlook Presentation. And this will be, Mr. Popapek, how will this work?
Yes, Mayor, it will be a combination of speakers tonight. Let me kick it off, and then I'll pass the baton on to our other guest speakers. But tonight's the kickoff to the budget conversations, and you'll hear others say this in other organizations, but the budget process is one of the most important process that any council that any council looks at during the course of the year. And as we've done in the past, we've used resident experts to assist us in looking at our financials and mapping our path. And that's what we'll be doing tonight. We'll hear from three presenters. Dr. Sharon Smith has extensive background serving various public and private institutions as economists, rising to the dean of school business at Fordham University amongst many other professional highlights and publications. Dr. Smith will provide a synopsis of the evolving macroeconomy. Peter Burns has had extensive experience in a career studying financial implications of public policy, most notably health and human services. Peter's worked directly with three Arizona governors preparing and presenting state's executive budget as the state's budget director. Peter will provide a microanalysis of the town's revenue forecasts for the next five to eight years. We will conclude with our own economic development director, Steve Prokopak, who will discuss the town's efforts to diversify its tax base and provide some insulation from the evolving macro variables and micro risk with the town's sales tax centric model. So without further ado, let me pass the baton on to Dr. Smith to talk about those micro, micro, micro trends.
Thank you and good afternoon. As we begin our annual.
Yeah, we'll just bring the microphone a bit closer.
Okay. As we begin our annual budget deliberations, it is certainly appropriate to review the state of national and local economies to set the context for those discussions. And in the next few minutes, I'll be giving an overview of the key aspects for the nation, the region, and the state, some of which are standalone patterns and some of which overlap in order to provide some insight for the economic outlook for Carefree. I must emphasize at the outset that the situation is highly dynamic. I've been checking the figures as I arrived for the meeting. So nothing here is set in stone, but I'm trying to set forth the trends. The U.S. economy began 2025 in a strong position. As you can see from the slide, growth had rebounded from COVID's deep hole in 2020 and posted annual gains for the gross net domestic product, which encompasses the value of all goods and services produced in the year. And they had, it had, the gains were at three percent or more for two consecutive quarters and with growth forecasted at that time for 2025 to remain at two percent or more. However, very recent data, namely just this week, show some cause for the concern. The Federal Reserve Bank of Atlanta produces a running forecast for GDP growth. Yesterday, the forecast projected a first quarter decline for national GDP amounted to 2.8% in large part due to decline in construction spending and weaker than expected manufacturing activity. That index is particularly volatile, it's already changed three times in the last ten days. There is additional concern, let me go first to the inflation, of course. As we enter 2025, inflation continued to be a concern. The Fed's target rate is two percent. All indices that the Fed watches had indicated that inflation was actually somewhere over two percent to as much as three percent. The primary index that the Fed concerns itself is with the personal consumption expenditure index and that continued to be at 2.5% in January. So given those numbers, there is a strong reason, and the Fed has indicated in speeches, that further interest rates cuts will be slower than expected. The labor market also began the year nationally in a solid position, a national unemployment rate of four percent and strong growth in jobs, though there were some signs of lengthening search that have appeared. In addition, more recently, there's been an increase in unemployment insurance claims. The stock market was hitting tremendous marks. In fact, on February nineteenth, the S and P hit an all-time record. But there were signs that investors are increasingly nervous, nervous about unsettled and unsettled with information on AI, artificial intelligence, tariffs, global political conflicts and so forth. Indeed, a survey by the Bank of America of fund managers, ninety percent of those managers felt that stocks were overvalued, so were expecting some sort of a decline. In fact, the S and P index plummeted yesterday and continued its downturn today so that the S and P index was wiped out, all the gains had been realized since the November election. Going forward, there's certainly uncertainties ahead. The future is by definition unknown. Nevertheless, business abhors uncertainty. And the more sources of uncertainty, the more reluctant is business to undertake large investments. Now, those sources of uncertainty can be on the negative side and the positive side. So we can group them under the titles of headwinds and tailwinds. Now, at the national level, clearly Fed cuts are a potential headwind. Fed cuts are heavily informed by monthly data and clearly they may be slower than originally anticipated. The Federal Reserve also regularly supplements the data that are gathered with more immediate information gained from conversations and anecdotal insights from those conversations with business leaders across sectors. Those are reported in something called the beige book. The beige book comes out eight times a year before the meetings of the Federal Open Market Policy Committee. The next meeting is March eighteenth and nineteenth. The beige book was completed on March fifth, but has not yet been posted. I think it will be posted after the next FOMC meeting. Certainly, in addition to the data they have already gathered, they'll be carefully monitoring the impact of the tariffs that began today. For Canada, those tariffs amount to ten percent on energy and twenty-five percent on all other goods. For Mexico, they amount to twenty-five percent on all goods. For China, they amount to ten percent on top of the ten percent tariff that was introduced last month. In addition, on Friday, there will be a twenty-five percent tariff on steel and aluminum from all other countries. Trade wars appear to have already begun today as China has retaliated with tariffs of its own, mainly so far on agricultural goods, and Canada is also planning tariffs. There are some tariffs that are aimed to be focused on goods such as Kentucky bourbon and other particular products from primarily Republican states. Those have, as far as I can see, they have not been announced yet. Meanwhile, debt ceiling and tax policy negotiations are underway and can be lengthy and contentious and lead to market turmoil. The actions by Doge have wide impacts across sectors. A particular concern is a particular sector which I will address shortly. Meanwhile, also deportations have begun and they may have major impact on select industry sectors that are in particular concern in Arizona, namely agriculture, construction, food processing, and preparation. Indeed, two-thirds of crop farm workers are foreign-born and an estimated twenty-two percent are not legally entitled to work in the U.S. They cover a wide range of tasks from picking fruit to slaughtering livestock. And this is in addition to the construction work they do. It is not clear if these individuals are deported, who will replace them and at what price. So that's another point to be checked and may have possible implications for inflation. Now, the tailwinds could still move our forecast up a bit. Clearly, Fed easing could lower rates and enable consumers to spend, increase their spending and their borrowing. This is a somewhat mixed blessing, however, as consumer debt is already high and there are signs of rising delinquencies, so it could in fact be a mixed blessing. The Trump administration's promised deregulation has been very well received by the financial sector. The potential tax cuts could raise what Keynes used to call animal spirits. Earnings reports have been good for most S and P five hundred companies, so they provide solid support as they beat analysts' expectations by substantial amounts. Now, if we focus in on the Arizona economy, Arizona, well, first of all, let me just say that the Federal Reserve is organized geographically and that Arizona is in the twelfth district, headed up by the Federal Reserve Bank of San Francisco. And the economic activity in that district expanded slightly at year's end with employment levels generally unchanged, wages up slightly, and employee retention improved. The district is, nevertheless, is on the whole, I would argue, a very strong district as, in fact, its workforce accounts for twenty-six percent of the nation's total personal income. Price levels, they may not seem that way to every individual here, but by all the statistics have been generally stable. And the retail sales showed a solid holiday season, even though currently some of the major retailers, in particular Walmart and Lowe's, have expressed concerns about sales going forward as it's signs of reluctance among lower-income buyers who are largely seeking bargains while spending is concentrated among the upper-income buyers. As the, Arizona is in fact one of the best performers among the states in the district. Their unemployment rate was 3.8%, strong payroll employment growth, strong earnings growth, continued population growth, and generally, in fact, Phoenix shows lower inflation than other metropolitan areas in the district. Now, what are the implications of the federal-level headwinds for Arizona? The national headwinds associated with the deportations may, as I said earlier, impact Arizona's agricultural and construction industries. They, if there is change in the support and the grants being given for chip manufacturing, that could affect the new developments in the Phoenix area. Though yesterday's news on the major investment from Taiwan's microchip company in their facility in Phoenix, which I believe they're increasing their production facilities from three to five and bringing in twenty-five thousand more employees is clearly a strong headwind for this area. Arizona is one of the largest manufacturing export facilities in the twelfth district, so they could be adversely affected by tariffs and trade wars. Another industry that frankly is of deep concern is tourism. Tourism, as I think we all know, is enormously important to the Arizona economy and certainly important to the town of Carefree. Cuts in the workforce at the National Parks and the Forest Service are significant. So far, a thousand full-time park employees have been fired out of a twenty thousand total and an additional three thousand from the Forest Service and an unknown number of temporary and provisional employees, which could then present major difficulties for parks to meet growing demand. In 2023, more than three hundred and twenty-five million visitors came to the National Parks. That is an especial concern for Arizona as the state has more national parks at twenty-two than any other state. And these parks provide a major attraction for travelers to our state. One estimate indicates that the direct travel spending in Arizona was $29.3 billion in 2023 and associated local tax amounted to eighteen, no, let's see, to 1.3 billion. Whereas the spending in Maricopa was 18.2 billion for total travel spending and local tax was $901 million. A reduction in park visitors because of long lines and/or partial closures at parks due to insufficient staff could have cascading effects for the state and for the local economy. At the same time, the Forest Service provides vital support in local firefighting. The reduction in force there could have a catastrophic impact in the event of an active wildfire season. And also going forward in terms of headwinds, water supplies, climate change in general are, as we know, continuing concerns for Arizona. Now, what are the implications of the federal-level tailwinds? California wildfires may in fact wind up being some good news for Arizona if it accelerates migration of people and businesses. An increase in consumer spending would of course raise sales tax revenues. And the deportation of illegal migrants may relieve budget pressure on the local communities that are currently supporting them. Now, going forward, it's, since the information is so dynamic, it helps to be able to go to regular sources of valid data and rich data. The San Francisco Fed provides those sorts of studies. Everything from daily information on recent, on important news to more in-depth studies. For example, a study they did on extreme heat and its impact on the economy, disruptions from the wildfire smoke. There's just a rich source of information. And as I said, the beige book, which is actually gathered by the Federal Reserve system, but addresses, is organized by different Federal Reserve district banks, reports the community conditions and is an important source of information. So in summary, we began the year in a healthy economic condition, nationally, regionally, and at the state level, certainly boding well for '25. Nevertheless, the uncertainties are growing for both the nation and the region. And these certain will have a bearing on Carefree given our dependence on our retail tax revenues, which Richard Burns will be talking about. Now, being alert, as I said, to the emerging information is an especially good way to arm ourselves and to prepare for any changes that we may need to make. But in the face of all these uncertainties, prudent management for the town calls for the maintenance of reserves, which provide the best buffer against an uncertain world. Thank you.
Your last comment was spot on. And I would also say, you know, we think about, we had all this information, the grand scale, most of it's national. But the one part that has an impact on us is the TSMC expansion and additional plants. So maybe some of those folks will live here, maybe not, but they'll certainly live relatively close to us, within twenty miles, and they'll make significant money. And they'll come here occasionally and they'll spend it.
For visits, exactly.
Okay, comments and questions from the council?
Yeah.
Does a lot of the park workers come in on the H2B program?
I haven't seen any data on that. Oh, I'm sorry, the Park Two visitors?
No, the workers for.
No, I have not seen any information on that. But the point.
There are a lot of them, yeah, I've friends who work there and a lot of the workers come on.
The point is that the positions have been eliminated. The positions have been eliminated. A thousand full-time positions.
But out of twenty thousand, that's not very much.
I think, if I can just interject for a second. So if the park systems find themselves not being able to maintain the hours they had before, fewer tourists may come to Arizona, maybe we'll, we in Carefree will have fewer people passing through our town who are on their way to the Grand Canyon.
Because we know that many of these tours begin at Sky Harbor and travel north, so they're going to stop at different places along the way.
Yeah, but some of the parks use the H2B workers. They provide them with housing and food and very minimal wages. So they're not illegal immigrants that are here, they're.
No, the illegal immigrants are in the food industries.
Exactly, but we were talking about the tourist industries.
Yeah, and the tourist industry, I'm talking about how important the parks are to tourism in Arizona. It's not the only reason, but it's a really strong reason why people come to Arizona. And if the parks cannot be either maintained because they have insufficient legal workers, the jobs have been eliminated and they have to cut. the jobs have been eliminated, and they have to cut back on the hours of operation, then people simply will not want to wait four or five hours to get into the Grand Canyon, to get into any of the other parks. That's what I'm talking about, that the illegal workers are more of an issue for the food industries and for construction.
Okay, anything else? Okay, well, thank you very much for sharing that and taking your time to prepare it. Thank you.
All right, Mayor, so we heard some uncertainty, good, bad, and different things are changing at the federal level, and there'll be trickle-down impacts to the state and the local economy. What will those impacts be? Well, we'll have to wait and see. But we can look in the crystal ball, and that's what Peter's going to do, is look at the microclimate and do a little forecasting of revenue.
Are you going to work this, or am I going to work it?
You can.
I can?
There we go.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, council, everybody. I'm going to talk about budget forecasts. It's largely going to be the same kind of presentation that I gave last year, and mostly things have not changed from last year significantly in terms of takeaways. As I said last year, in terms of caveats, this forecast goes out about eight years. Anything over two or three years is wholly inaccurate, and this will be as well. I have not factored in a recession, per se, into the next year, eight years, but I have recognized some economic effects that are going to take place, but it's important to know that this forecast does not specifically address for the closure of the CVS, the movement of Ace Hardware out of town, or the opening of the Carefree Quarter on the northeast corner of Cave Creek and Carefree Road. The, also, the forecast does not specifically adjust for any of the initiatives that the council has adopted in their strategic plan, whether it be increased expenditure for zoning code review or anything else that you approve, because it's not in the budget yet. The forecast covers the general fund and the fire fund combined, which is the vast majority of the spending by the town. The only other major source would be the Highway User Revenue Fund. And when I did this, there was no testing of whether the forecasted revenues or expenditures could fit within the town's expenditure limit.
So, excuse me just for a second. So I understand not including Ace Hardware moving, because it's, they haven't moved. I understand northeast corner, we just heard about it. I understand not including that, but CVS has been closed for 18 months. Why not include that?
Well, it's, it, first of all, as you know, Mayor, the specific data on related sales tax tying back to a specific property or business is confidential information. So in the grand scheme of things, CVS closing did not wreak havoc with your sales tax collections. In fact, they've gone up. Now, I recognize that it's closed, and that some, in, some portion of the income streams at the town is down, but I can't quantify for you how much that was. So rather than say I've adjusted for it, it's just kind of prego, it's in there. Okay? Is there garlic in there? Yeah, it's prego. The major, what I'm going to talk about, major takeaways, revenues, expenditures, and some closing thoughts. Before we start, though, how did last year's forecast turn out? Well, if you take a look at the numbers from last year, which is under the blue column there, compared to the 24 trial balance, you see that revenues, actual revenues exceeded the forecast by 1.8 million, or about 18%. The big areas, local sales tax was up a half a million dollars, almost 10%. Building fees were up by 122,000 over what we had forecasted. The interest income, the LGIP is the Local Government Investment Pool, which is run by the State Treasurer. We take our surplus, deposit it with the State Treasurer. We had forecasted a whopping $36,000 of returns, and in fact, we earned $649,000 of interest. And finally, there was a grant for $489,000 that we didn't count on. So altogether, you have about an 18% increase in resources that were not forecasted last year. From a forecasting point of view, that's a very good thing, because if we would have been 20% lower, you would have had a problem. Similar to that, our forecast for expenditures was lower than, was higher than what actually turned out. You can see here that we had, I had forecasted $10.7 million worth of expenditures, turned out to be about $9 million, or $1,007,000 less than what the forecast was. Specific areas, capital improvement program, I forecasted $3.3 million, turned out to be $2.7, and the fire service capital projects, I had forecast $1.1, turned out to be $132. As I understand it, the $973,000 that we budgeted and spent for the new fire truck is coming out of the capital improvements line at the 2.7 million, and so therefore, the fire expenditures were not there. And as I will tell you later on, and as you know in budgeting, capital is the most variable thing that you can do. It comes and goes. You can adjust it more easily than just about anything else. It also, with all due respect to our forecasters, my experience as a budget director is that projections on how much we're going to spend on capital rarely come true. They often take longer and don't spend quite as much as they anticipated. Anyway, so that was last year. Whoops, what did I do? Okay. Okay, major takeaways. The, as I said last year, for many, many, many years, the town's revenues have been greater than their expenditures. Now, under the forecast period, the expenditures will be greater than the revenues. However, most of that change is due to a very aggressive capital expenditure program. From an operations point of view, you're still going to be generating surpluses, but over the timeline that we're looking at there, the capital that I've included in the forecast is $33 million worth of capital. That was going to just change the flow of dollars where you're going to be spending more out, which is partially the philosophy of the town. You pay cash for everything, which means you build up a big supply of cash, you engage in projects, and you spend it down. Major takeaways, the 24 cash balance was $18.6 million, and that's a, almost a $2 million increase over FY '23. Under the primary forecast, which ends in '22, with all that capital expenditure I was talking about, you'll still have $4.6 million cash balance. So you will have spent down approximately $14 million in a, with a $33 million capital program. So you really have the opportunity to apply breaks at various places should you need to. Under the pessimistic forecast, that cash balance will decline to $1.4 million, and that's largely because, starting in FY '27, I'm arbitrarily taking out a 25, an estimate of 25% of the retail sales tax, just to reflect a recession, change in purchasing patterns or anything else. Just to remind you, in, as you go through this process, the budgetary policy of the town is to maintain a minimum cash balance, $2.5 million, and you identify an ideal cash balance as 50% of your operating expenditures, and by '22, I'm projecting your operating expenditures will be 11.7, which would mean that you need to be in the, in order to do that, you'd be in the range of about $6 million. Terms of revenues, historically, in FY '17, the town generated $5.4 million. By FY '24, you're knocking on the door of $11 million, and the forecast indicates that that growth rate will slow down. You can see the curve is a lot flatter after that big uptake. We have a drop-down for '25, and then it'll just be a slower growth. The drop-down in '25, I believe, is largely due to the, some of the state shared revenues and how they're going to be treating those. There was a one-time bump that we got because of the flat income tax and urban revenue sharing and yada, yada, yada. Okay, major components of your revenues, very important slide. 58, this is FY '24, okay? 58% of your revenues is the local sales tax. State income tax is 9%. Your interest, that $646,000 we talked about, that was 6%. State sales tax, 5%, building fees, and then all other, everything else. The name of the game in your budget process is sales tax, sales tax, sales tax. You really can't control the, your interest income is going to be dependent upon what your cash balance is, what the interest rates are. As much as we would like to have the interest rates fall so that home sales would accelerate, yada, 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 you're making good money on it. And then you just share, the state shares money with you, which constitute state income tax, state sales tax, you have an INLU tax, and you have some HERF money. The other two are not really significant in here. In terms of your, of your local sales tax, based on '24, retail is a third of it. Okay? So very important, the major point. What's surprising to me, when you can kind of look at the data, is how important accommodation has been. Our facility across the street here is generating, together with Savannah, is generating significant monies, not only because of the occupancy level, but because of the rate. We have a six, effectively, a 6% sales tax rate on accommodations, as opposed to a 3% rate on just about everything else. Construction is 10% of our sales tax revenue. Restaurant and bars, 9.5%. I know that from the Econo, Economic Development Advisory Board, I've got all these acronyms, what we are focusing on, besides the northeast corner, which is in process and moving along, for Town Center, we're looking at, how can, what can you do with retail, what can you do with restaurant and bar? Those are the things that we can drive things with, and of course, we had a general plan process, and while everybody wasn't happy, at least the nominal designation for the northwest corner of Tom Darlington and Carefree Highway was accommodation, which would be at the 6% rate. So the other thing that's very interesting is, in the last five years, well, one other thing. First, rentals, 6.2% of our 24 income. As effective, that's a component that was both leases, residential, you know, like for the season, and also for VRBOs and blah, 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 all that other stuff. Effective January 1st, the law went into effect, the legislature prohibited cities and towns from taxing residential rentals. So over time, that's going to decline. It's just going to happen that way. But the other thing that's interesting is internet sales, and it's, it's great. Couple of years ago, there was a Supreme Court decision of the, called the Mayfair decision, which required retailers that are engaged in mail order and all of that sort of stuff to actually collect sales taxes for the locality for which the goods were being sold into. Combined with the town going on to Department of Revenue collecting our sales tax, Department of Revenue getting very aggressive on this, that, and COVID, by the way, all of that has really exploded the kind of collections that we've gotten from international sales. One of the things that would be worth investigating, if our attorney has time, would be if you order from Safeway, and you live in Carefree, and it's delivered to Carefree, is the tax paid to the city of Scottsdale or to the city of Carefree? I don't know the answer to that, but same with Instacart or Uber, not Uber, but what's the meal delivery, yeah, anyway. But knowing, I mean, this is 60% of our revenue, and so understanding the components and being able to maximize those components is pretty important. Carefree sales tax, you can see, it's kind of flattening, but still growing on a hefty curve as, according to the forecast. And if you look at where did the forecast come from, I'm not sophisticated enough to do my own economic forecast the way that we used to do it, so what we rely as on is the JLBC growth rates. And I'll tell you what JLBC is in a moment, but for, to get to '25, we grew the 24 cash balance by the JLBC factor of 3.1%, less $200,000 for construction and rentals. I'll talk about why less $200,000. Then in FY '26, it's the previous year grown by JLBC at 3.7%, '27, '26 at 4.2, 4.2, and then for '29 and beyond, I just flattened it out at a flat 2.5%. Kind of conservative, whatever, it just gets us through. What is JLBC? JLBC is a Joint Legislative Budget Committee. They are the legislative staff that advises the legislature and fights with the governor over budget matters. So what is their assumption? What they do is they have what they call the Finance Advisory Committee, and that's made up of a bunch of economists throughout the state that practice in the state, and everybody gets together and they, they raise their skirts and they show what their forecast is for each year. And for sales taxes, the average was, you can see, under '25 was 3.1%, '26, 3.7%, 4.2%, and 4.2. So I use that forecast. Now, the mix that the state taxes is different than the mix that we tax, so we're not going to move one and one together, and over time, the more that we do this, just like that first slide I showed you that we were underestimating our revenues, you'll probably find that that's hopefully going to be true if we tie it down to this. Why forecast, why adjust for construction and rentals? If you look at the construction factor, you see a high in 2018, 900,000. You see a high in FY '22 of basically $900,000. '24 is 664. I don't know where that's going to go, and it's obviously variable, so what I did is took out 24, $200,000 a year going out, same with rentals, sort of. That, I have a legislative prohibition. I don't know how much rental, residential rental we had versus VRBO, all of that sort of stuff. So we kind of arbitrarily, if you will, took out 200 grand to make it work. Why did I take out 25% of retail? In order to offer a pessimistic forecast. Took it out in '27. It covers a multitude of sins, which could be a recession, a major retail sales collector goes out, changing pattern of purchases, I don't know what people are going to buy, and the poss, and this is a real possibility, and I know that a legal cities and towns is on it, the legislature is considering prohibiting cities and towns from levying a tax on, sales tax on food. You know, if you can negotiate that to be, leave it up to each local jurisdiction to submit it to their voters, that would be a good thing as opposed, because City of Phoenix doesn't have it. So if the legislature puts it on the ballot, which is what they have been talking about, it could likely pass. Again, I don't know what that is. Does the 200,000, does that 530,000 cover that? I don't know, because again, it's confidential information, but it's at least, it's a bone out there to say something could happen. So how will the composition of revenues change between now and '22? You can see that we're going to get, if nothing else, we're going to get more dependent upon local sales tax, partially because our LGIP interest income is going to go from 6% of our revenues to 1.4%, because you're going to be spending down, hopefully, interest rates will be down. All other is going to be larger, largely because state income, the state shared revenues are shared based on population. We are not growing. Hate to break it to you, we have 3,900 people, we're probably going to top out at 4,100 people. The state of Arizona, when I first moved here, X number of years ago, we had two congressional districts and just over 2, a million people, and now we have 10, nine, 10 congressional, anyway. We're just getting squeezed percentage-wise, so we have to look at what we have to look at, and that's really developing our local sales tax. The other category, there's not a whole lot of other stuff that we don't, that we get revenue from. You see the big four, local sales tax, state income, interest, well, five, state sales tax, and building fees amount to 80%, or over 80%. tax and building fees amount to eighty percent or over eighty percent. All the rest of it is interesting and fun, but federal, state, local grants, I have no idea what that's going to be, four hundred eight. Utility franchise fees are pretty consistent. Utility water company lease payments, they're going to be paid off at some point. Now, further down, if you look at the water company lease payment of principal, way down, you're going to see that's growing from twenty thousand to three hundred thousand based upon the agreement that you did a couple, three, four, five years ago, two years ago, whenever it was. There's, I don't think there's any, well, grants could always change, just, you know, the rest of that stuff is pretty nominal. How will the composition change? Major sales and use taxes are going to grow, everything else is relatively speaking, pretty flat. So, we're just going to get more and more dependent upon sales taxes. On the expenditure side, we went from FY seventeen, five million, to nine million FY twenty-four. The forecast shows that we're going to peak out in FY thirty at thirteen point five, and then decline to eleven point six, and that's largely because of the capital program as well. We're running up until that time about four point one million a year on average, and then we're going to, my estimate says we're going to step down, step down. Major categories of expenditures, capital improvement, that's what's driving the budget right now. That is, to some degree, discretionary. The other three things to worry about, rural metro, we'll talk about more about that in a moment, public works in general, and law enforcement. Those are the major things that you deal with. Administration, yes, it's seven percent, but all the rest of it is not that big a deal. It's capital improvements, rural metro, and public works, and law enforcement. Capital improvements program, you'll see there, that's the history of it, we peaked in twenty-five. I'm looking at capital improvements of, I think I took the five-year average, took eighty-five percent of it, and then, and just put that in. So, I'm more skeptical that we're going to spend that much, but it's less than five million, and then it'll drop off. There's the capital program, you're going to see it in great detail, well, tonight, right? You're doing, you're doing the song and dance tonight, okay? So you'll get to see more. I'm just, I'm just showing eighty-five percent of that at four point six million dollars, and then last two columns, three million and two million. Rural metro fire protection. Contract ends in twenty-seven, okay? What will happen, we have inflators in there between now and twenty-seven, based upon the last time it was negotiated. What's going to happen in twenty-eight, or twenty-seven, can't tell you, that's going to be subject to negotiation and a whole bunch of other things that are going on in the world. And the forecast here in twenty-seven, I think, we go from two million, twenty-eight, we go from two million to three million, and that's arbitrary. I have no idea whether that's correct or not, but I would suspect that you ought to gird yourself for something significant. Changing expenditure composition, you see the capital, twenty-four on the one side, thirty-two on the other, thirty-two is beyond the five-year capital program where I just took my average at eighty-five percent. Capital improvement's going to decline, but rural metro fire department is going from twenty percent to twenty-six percent. The other one I'll point out is law enforcement, goes from eight percent to twelve percent. I'm having law enforcement grow, I think, at a rate of about ten percent. That's, that's, those, there's, I'll talk about that in a moment. Administration stays about the same, public work stays about the same in my forecast. The other category, after you look at the one, two, three, four, five, top, they comprise seventy percent of your spending, the rest of it, planning and development, town clerk, the court that we just talked about, and marketing, economic development, that's where your, most of the buddy's going to be spending. I'm also loading in quite a bit for risk management and insurance, we've seen some pretty large increases in the last few years, and I'm forecasting that that will continue, and you see, in this time period, we're going from a hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty, two thousand, boom, 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 it's a lot of, a lot of increase in expenditure. How will the composition change? You see capital, boom, boom, the big one up there, then you see rural metro is going to grow large, and then you see public works is moving along, admin is moving along, and the bottom line there is law enforcement, the blue line that's coming up, and I'm just having it grow at a steady ten percent. Closing thoughts. Despite the better FY twenty-four trial balance, at the end of the forecast period in thirty-two, this year's and last year's forecasts are ending up with about the same amount of money, four point five million dollars. It's amazing, it's the magic of numbers. Given the assumptions used in this model and forecasting it out, the closing thoughts here are the same that this, as they were last year, which is no immediate panic over the town finances, caution, careful monitoring should be the watchwords. There's a whole lot of, could be a whole lot of disagreement about the assumptions. Okay, that's fine, run your own estimate. Closing thoughts on revenues. The fiscal structures, as you know, very dependent upon the local sales tax. Sales tax will increase from fifty-eight percent to over sixty-six percent of revenues without the addition of the northeast corner. That's what's so neat about this, is that, you know, if, if our hopes, dreams, and aspirations come true on the northeast corner, baby, we're in the money, because we look like we can make it there, and we can make it anywhere, you know? I mean, it's that kind of a town. But we're, we're going to be subject to risk, right? And, and sales tax is notoriously volatile, but it's really hard to do in this town for lots of reasons, and one is because of our demographics. I'm not sure that this town is subject to the same kind of economic pressures as the country in the whole, besides the fact you have a hundred billion dollars going to be invested over the timeframe of this forecast on I-17 and 303. A hundred billion dol, I mean, it's mind-boggling how much money that is, and it's going to be there. So, you know, if you can buy land, buy land now, because it's, it's, you know, this is, this is like coming here in nineteen fifty-nine, you know? There's limited options for sales tax growth, northeast corner, town center, and the northwest corner, and you just can't blow it, you know? We just got to, and I will say that the town management council, administration, everyone has done a wonderful job to get us here. I mean, we got a nice little gig going here, nice revenues, nice budgets, nothing very exciting, it's pretty boring, that's fine, I mean, when our biggest expenditure is going to be talking about culverts, whoa. My, 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 my particular on the planning and zoning and economic, my project is sidewalks, so be back. There's little prospect for growth in state shared revenues, we've talked about that. Northeast corner is obviously out, that's the biggest conservative factor. The other thing is, I'm keeping the L-GIP interest income at a hundred and sixty-five thousand, I don't know if that's, I think that's conservative considering we made six hundred and eighty-six this past year. Capital impro, improvement program, most dominant factor in this whole forecast, thirty-three million dollars, going to draw down the cash balance by fourteen million. Greatest risk is fire protection, don't know what's going to happen, don't know how we're going to do that. Second greatest risk is law enforcement. We got a sheriff's office that's still under consent decree, and we got greater demands for law enforcement. Has anybody seen that little white Mustang with the white lettering on it? It's awful. I mean, we ought to pass an ordinance, but anyway. The, so, law enforcement, who knows? Finally, the opportunities to reduce expenditures outside the capital improvement program, fire protection and law enforcement, it's pretty limited. There's just not much there, there in state government, I mean, in, in town government. And the final words, again, the policy of maintaining a targeted level of rainy day fund, whether it's a two and a half million or six months of expenditures is very wise, to the extent you can, you ought to defend it, and then there's a whole bunch of spreadsheets if you want to see them. And that's me. Questions?
Very good, thank you.
All right.
And I think we make sure we post both presentations on our website so we can.
Yes.
Because you can't possibly digest this, this.
Oh, yeah, you can, you got it, just vote I.
So.
Go ahead.
Both this presentation and the video will be posted on our website, we will also make it available and push it out to the community.
Okay, good, thank you. Yeah, to me, critical things are sales tax revenue, so it becomes a bigger, bigger piece of our revenue source, and if the economy goes south, you're, we're susceptible to feeling that. And I would say the second, my estimation, biggest threat is the state legislature taking away our right, our ability to tax food, actually, the tax rentals that they've taken away, and who knows what else they may have in their sights. Okay, other comments or questions for Peter?
No, I agree with what you just said, and obviously, being heavily reliant on sales taxes, which is totally fine, we just do have to be very cautious, and we have been, and so we just need to continue doing that, and I believe we will.
Okay. All right, okay, thank you, Peter, well done.
So I get to follow this, and my goal is to talk faster than Peter and be, do a longer presentation, so, just for everybody suffering, just kidding. You know, one of the things I wanted to talk about is just looking at revenue, and Peter kind of walked us into this, and it's kind of a segue as to, you know, when we look at the future for how we're programming revenue and expenses, that when we look at revenue, and I kind of see myself as an economic development director slash revenue officer, because we start looking at revenue and what revenue means to the town, right? And since we're so heavily dependent upon, you know, sales tax, and particularly, brick and mortar sales tax, it becomes really important to figure out, you know, what levels of sales tax do we want to achieve, and as we start getting closer to build out, it's going to become important to say, you know, we can max out where this revenue is going to be, we can look at what our expenses are going to do, and they may increase over time, and hopefully, we can get revenues that are a certain percentage above our expenditures that allow us to make sure that we always have a good cushion, we can always put money into the capital improvement program, we can always make sure that we're maintaining our roads, always we get closer to build out, because I don't think the town really wants to go towards a property tax, and so our goal is, is really to try to create as much as we possibly can in a thoughtful and meaningful way that allows us to do that, as well as be able to make decisions down the road for the other things that people may want or would like to see in the community. You know, we've talked about putting parks in the community, we've talked about open space, we've talked about quality of life features that people would like to potentially have, you know, are there things we might want to do as far as the, the town center or the gardens, and these can be decisions that aren't made today or made tomorrow, you know, in the next two to three years, but we're talking about decisions down the road that this community is going to, going to have to make, and our goal, and our job when we come here is to try to leave the place a little bit better than we found it, try to do that continuously, and, and you know, and we're stewards as citizens of this time to be the stewards for the citizens of the future, to make sure we're not leaving them a big giant mess, so. With that. Whoops, we're going the wrong way here. Our guy is upside down. So again, what I'm going to be talking about today is just really drilling it down into this retail revenue, and I'm going to really be focusing in on the brick and mortar retail. And so when we look at our brick and mortar, it's going to be, you know, your retail, your food and beverage, accommodations or hospitality, and when, when I have rental in here, it's not really necessarily the rental we get on leasing, you know, real property, it's more on the leasing like the ATV guy. So I'll consider that as kind of our retail component that we have as part of our community. I'm sorry, and then we have restaurant, food is really the, the food tax we get from, from like BASHs or other food, food providers. And then we look at the various, the three different areas we have, and, you know, that's the thing about Carefree, was we're really limited on what we're, what our opportunities are, and it's really limited down to the Carefree Highway and Cave Creek Road intersection, town center, and Tom Darlington and Carefree Highway. And so these things are, it's a limited opportunity, but these limited opportunities, I think, you know, if we do them right and we do them thoughtfully, we can generate the types of revenues that we need, and as Peter's forecasting, you know, have the fun money and the happy days in the future, be able to do the things that we want to do, and still make sure that we're maintaining a quality community. I just wanted to say that the projections are based, that you see through here are on today's dollars, I'm not projecting any kind of inflation or deflation or anything like that, so everything you see here is going to be relative to today's dollars, and, and everything's estimates, and I can't do actuals, and I think Peter went through this, it's really difficult for us to get actuals from, from the state, because we're such a small community, and for us to be able to do that is legally prohibitive, because we have some categories where there's so few businesses, you'll know exactly who I'm talking about. On the other hand, my estimates are pretty darn good, I think, in talking with some of these businesses and trying to get as close as I possibly can, but I just want to let you know they are, they are really solid estimates. And then just to go through the tax rates, our sales tax on, on, on regular goods is three percent, our food tax is two percent, and then the bed tax is three percent, and so when you look at accommodations, they get charged the sales tax and the bed tax for a total of six percent. Sales tax threats, and so, you know, I'm not going to go over a lot of things, and one of the things that we wanted to do this year when we brought Sharon in to make this presentation was, you know, our goal here is, is you guys are going to be making decisions on the budget, as well as being able to give the community an opportunity to digest some information, to start having some thoughts, start looking at the budget ahead of time and the processes, the headwinds, tailwinds, and all of those things, and give as much information as we possibly can, not only for you to help make decisions, but ask questions about this information, so we have enough time to be able to react to that type of, to those questions. But here's just some of the threats that we deal with, obviously, volatility in the macro environment, you know, lack of portfolio depth, and one of the things that Gary's going to go through when he goes through the budget, which is really nice to see, and you can see it through Peter's presentation, is kind of the strata of, you know, how much, you know, how we're diversifying this between different types of retail that we have within the community, in particular with accommodations. And then, you know, just dealing with retail displacement and dead space, you know, and that's just, think, taking things that could go dead or could come back online, you know, and, and then looking at reinvestment. And so, this is, it's not a, a new story, this is something that we've been dealing with, and then again, the reduction of the sales tax on, on groceries could definitely impact us. And so one of the things as leadership, we just need to be thoughtful about how we're going to be addressing that. I know Gary will be working with the league, and maybe there's provisions we can get that will allow communities to independently vote, if this was to be taken away at a state level, that communities can independently vote potentially to reinstate that particular tax for a specific community. I'm going to go and just talk about Cave Creek Road and Carefree Highway, and I look at this holistically, it's not the northeast corner, it's the entirety of the corner that we have to look at, and so this is, you know, really our primary revenue opportunity, or our primary revenue source right now, and, and being that a lot of this revenue generally comes from people outside the community. And that's one thing that when you start looking at a community of thirty-eight hundred people, and the amount of revenue that we have to generate, we are very heavily dependent upon others, and others being people who live within ten, fifteen minutes, other people who live in the metropolitan area, and those who are tourists that come. And so the predominance of people who would shop in an area like this, obviously, are not going to be tourists, it's going to be people who live within, probably the, you know, ten to twenty commute, and so, you know, and the northeast corner will be a part of that, and, and that's good bread and butter type revenue that you want to generate, and this is a very consistent, it's been particularly with hardware being one of the key components, even when we saw COVID, hardware was still one of those things that was remain open, and it was one of those things that remained strong, and we find out if people get stimulus checks, they buy hardware, they buy, they, they do things to their home, and so it's been very, very good for us in, in our conversation, and you know, Maren had a while back, but I don't see anything that's really changed as far as revenue goes on this particular area here, and so, you know, we're projecting just probably a little bit of an uptick here. The one thing that's happened is, is the CVS is now going to be Rare Earth, and so we're, hopefully, they're going to open here for the fiscal year, and we'll be able to look at what that revenue is going to be. I can't look at them specifically, but we can look at the end of year revenues and see what kind of impacts they have, and, and then try to anecdotally talk to them and see what kind of revenues they're generating, so we.
Steve, can I ask you a question? When you talk about Rare Earth Gallery, are we sure they're going to open as a retail site? I've heard that they're just using it as storage, I mean, do you know for sure?
Yeah, so as far as where Earth goes, we, their, their business license is conditional upon them opening up as a retail, so they have some time to be able to get things done, but if they don't open as a retail, and I know Stacy might have a little bit more information on that, but that, their business license does not, it would go away, they wouldn't, they have the ability to operate there, and they can't have warehouse inside the community. But they're, this is a ramp-up period for them to get started, but the intention is for them to be selling on that site and out of that, out of that building.
Good.
And, and revenue projections, I kind of, I'm just going to assume are going to be close to what the CVS revenues are, and I'm going to say that's somewhere between sixty and eighty thousand to begin with, and we'll see what Rare Earth actually can do. Oh, and then the other one is, obviously, we have the northeast corner, you know, you kind of know what's going on with that, is when I start looking at revenues, this is not banked yet. not banked yet, and so, but this is revenue that we, you know, we're looking at, and hopefully we can count on, as we start to look forwards and towards our budget. And as we get closer, more into the budget process, we're going to hopefully know a little bit more about where they stand and when those construction start times look like, and how that's going to impact for this next fiscal year, or even the next fiscal year. But there is no revenue projected in '26 for this particular site, obviously, even if they started construction, they wouldn't be for this particular '26 fiscal year, so '25, '26. But this is kind of the way we're projecting it, and this is what we presented when we presented the development agreement roughly of what this revenue stream looks like, added in with the northwest corner of that intersection, not northwest corner of Tom Darlington and Carefree Highway. So this is this intersection when we look at that. And then the Town Center is one of the areas that's obviously has been, is mostly built out, hopefully you can read this. And, and so what we do in the Town Center is, is we look at the blue is generally the retail producing area that, that, that we see most of the retailers in, a lot of the other places are going to be residential. I don't include banks and services, you know, the banks are the banks. I don't include office, the office isn't going to generate us really any revenue, other than, you know, the rental tax on commercial rentals. And so that's where I'm focusing in, so when you look at the square footages here, when you look at the revenues generated, this is for this particular area, and then included in that is, you don't see on there is Savannah, and so when I look at the, I throw Savannah as kind of like the Town Center, because it really doesn't have a category. And so when we start talking about revenue and what that revenue looks like, you know, that's not going to change that much in this area here, the overall vacancy is good, where it's 93% occupancy, which is really strong for a market now. Are those the quality tenants that we all want to see, or do we want to see a better mix of retail in there? And I know this council is wanting to see, you know, a way for us to be able to move towards more retail, which is why I look at that percentage of occupancy generating tax at 63%. Personally, I like to try to get that closer to 80% as a target, I think that's the way that we should look at that. And so we're going to be looking at ways to minimize and get rid of, you know, businesses that aren't even open, and that don't even have business licenses, and so we're going to start focusing on that this year, and looking at ways to just make sure that we put this space in good production. And then looking at hospitality, I did actually up this from last year by 100,000, and, and so, you know, our hospitality's been strong. And in talking with the folks over at the Hampton, they're, they're doing really well, and, and so they're excited about what's going on there, as far as growth of their business. And then Savannah's actually been doing extremely well also. And so hospitality has been a really strong part, and what's not included in here is how hospitality, because I don't have these numbers, I'd have to figure, I have to dive a little deeper, the impact hospitality has on the rest of our retail in the Town Center. And so that's one thing that, you know, when we looked at the initial estimates, they're, you know, from the hotel, in particular, they, you know, they had estimates, but I'm, I'm going to see if there's ways that we can try to capture what we think is being spent by those people that, and even if it's just looking at standard tourist information, we'll look at that. And then we look at our retail opportunity, and, you know, obviously we're talking about the RFP for the Town Hall site, that's a great opportunity for redevelopment. And then we have the green sites, which we show currently as development opportunities with, and they're infill sites within the Town Center. And, you know, the one thing that we're going through now is the, the parking and circulation planning process, and is, one of the things that we were focused on was trying to look at parking that potentially would be on-street in the major right-of-ways as far as Tom Darlington and Cave Creek, and seeing if that was a way for us to be able to facilitate more parking in the area, so we can look at the infill development of these sites. But as we keep looking at how much parking, you know, as we've gone through the stakeholder groups, we've had conversations, that, that might get minimized. And so then we're going to start looking at, okay, on these infill sites, is parking something that we got to do, at least in the interim, and find solutions? And then if there's ways that we can find interim solutions, are there ways that, you know, the town can help position those to be future infill development sites? So those are conversations that we're going to be having as we move through the next year. And then just looking at, again, I just talked about the parking, you know, the other thing that we look at is the per-square-footage capability of the town. And so that's one of the things that we're talking about when we looked at trying to bring somebody into, talk about market position, and, and what is the target for us to be able to say, okay, we should really, as this kind of environment, be generating $350 or $400 a square foot. And so that's one of the things that we want to just start focusing in on, on how we maximize that retail, and that'll also dictate a little bit the types of tenants that we want to go for. Maybe we want to have more restaurant, or look at the type of retail that we have. And again, you know, obviously looking at, at the total retail absorption, 88%. And then the last section is Tom Darlington and Carefree Highway, and so one of the major changes is that we went through the general plan update, we reduced the site size down, we took out the two northern sites and properties, which obviously is probably a good thing for, I think, for the neighbors on that, on Langwood Lane, who were worried about access to that particular location. And, and the reality is, is those sites were so difficult as part of a development, it really didn't make sense to have them in there anyhow, and it'll probably be best served that they'll be residential. And so we look at the three sites that are left, and so we're down to about 16 acres. And, you know, there's nothing going on on that site right now. And so when you start, when I put my projection in, this is just me just spitballing as to what I think it is, it could be anything. And so when we start looking at, one of the things that we were tasked with from the Town Council strategic plan was to look at the build-out of the town. And so it's fairly easy to do, we've got three little, we've got three locations, I showed you the numbers on those locations, and then we can start looking at projections for each one of those particular locations out over time, on what we possibly could have. And so when we start looking at the Town Center, it's fairly bankable, right? We, Town Center is mostly built out, we can really kind of rely on that as some level of steady flow of retail. And when we look at the Carefree Highway and Cave Creek Road location, you know, our best opportunity is to look at the northeast corner to add revenue, but again, it's a very stable without that of what it is today. And so, and then if we were ever to add on an additional resort over on Carefree Highway and Tom Darlington, that just shows you kind of what this impact is. And again, these are just estimates here, and so I kind of looked at what I think is a reasonable, could this happen? Yes. And if it happens, you know, our, our peak capacity for our brick and mortar type of retail is right around 6.3 million, and I'm going to say somewhere between 6 and, and 6.5 million. And so if you start looking, and we're right around 4-point-something million today, or 4 million today, we can add about another 2 to 2.5 million in, in revenue to the town, and that's pretty significant. And so as we get towards build-out, you know, how that revenue can be accelerated as a percentage over what our costs are, those are the things when you start looking at the budget, you just need to start looking at, as we start looking at the future of the budget, and the types of things that we want to start putting in the horizon as, as, as capital plan and capital planning goes. And so the other sales tax revenues, and this is my last slide, these are the other, the other sections. And so construction sales tax, for the most part, you're going to see a lot of these in Peter's presentation, that it just show they're going to be very steady, stable, where they're at, and you're going to be able to see those. Construction sales tax will spike if we get the project in the northeast corner, you're going to see a spike here. But you want to look at that bankable revenue that we can get. Online sales tax, I will say that that's improved, we don't have any control over online sales tax, but if you're, if you're deciding whether you're going to buy something in Scottsdale, or you're going to go buy something online in Carefree, well, if you buy it online, you're going to actually help your own town, so that revenue comes back to us. But I do understand people like to get out of their house. Better yet, shopping Carefree. You know, the commercial building rental tax is going to be fairly the same, I don't see that being attacked, you know, under attack by the legislature at all. You know, and these other, the other one I want to talk about is, just real briefly, when we look at the lodging tax, one of the things we're looking at is how short-term rentals play into that, because short-term rentals as a business would be considered lodging. And so we just need to make sure that we're capturing all those dollars from short-term rentals that are in the town. So if they're going to be in there and causing havoc in some of these neighborhoods, at least they should be paying their fair share of the sales tax. And with that, that's my presentation. And, and just going to end it by saying, you know, this is one of the things that the community's asked, is that, you know, we start looking at people who in the community who have expertise, and putting them in positions to be able to work on things for the town and provide their, their expertise at gratis. And so, you know, I really want to thank Peter, I want to thank Sharon for their, you know, they put a ton of time into doing this, they put a lot of thought into doing this. And this is really to help guide you, Gary, and guide this community, and be able to ask questions, look at the budget process, and really start to make thoughtful decisions on how we want to spend our money and where our revenue's going to be coming from. And the Economic Development Advisor, both, both of them are members of the Economic Development Advisory Board, that's what that's all about. It is about an opportunity for the community to come in on a, on an informal, public venue, to be able to listen in on what kind of conversations are happening in the town as far as economic development goes, or revenue, or whatever, the Town Center, and, and be able to engage, and be able to listen, and be able to ask questions. And so that's what that's all about. At the same time, it's a resource to the Town Council, and so if there's anything, you know, we're focused right now, and with an agenda that's built on the strategic plan that was put together by council, but if there are other issues or things that you would like to have discussed or debated in a public setting, and informal, you know, definitely reach out to myself, and we'll figure out a way to get that on, on to an agenda for that kind of conversation, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, council, any questions or comments for Mr. Prokopak? No, you covered everything, Steve, thank you. And I reiterate what Steve said about Peter and Sharon Smith's presentation, very, very good, a lot of work went into that, and we appreciate that. So I would just suggest that we take a break for five minutes, because we have two key items coming up. Oh, yeah, I do, I'm so sorry, yes. So before we do that, thank you very much, had it right in front of me, so I remember. So we have public comments, Cindy Bergen, please come on up, please limit your comments to about three minutes.
Mayor Crane and council, I have a question, and it was partially answered already by Steve, but I just wanted to give some background. I am an active member of the Cave Creek infamous Facebook page, and they always have discussions. And the other night I was out, and they were having a discussion about the CVS. And I had heard that Rare Earth was going to be moving in there, so I put it out there that Rare Earth was moving in there, not knowing any kind of structure that was going to be there. And then I got a response from someone from Rare Earth, saying that, oh no, this is just going to be a warehouse for us. So I got in my car yesterday, and I went down there, and there was no one around, but there were pallets loaded, full of their rich rocks, all the way around the building, they were wrapped in plastic, the wind was blowing, the plastic was flying, it was a mess. So I'm just wondering if this is a warehouse, obviously we won't get any sales tax, because there are no sales, we don't get any rent, because we don't own the building. So how are we going to manage that?
Yeah, in fact, I would just say, I'd be interested to know, Steve would be interested to know who posted that from Rare Earth, so we can, like, close the loop with them? Go ahead.
It's a good question, and it's something that, you know, we, you know, we have the same concerns, right? And so, you know, property owners have rights, and so one of the things that we wanted to do is, when they started to talk about what they were doing, was to make sure that, hey, look, we want to condition this, and so we rarely, do we do temporary CFOs or do anything like that, but in this case, to be conservative, one of the things that we wanted to do was make sure that, you know, they were doing the right thing, because warehouse in this town requires a special use permit, and so we don't, you know, we don't want to see warehouse in here, and I don't want to see warehouse, and I know you don't, and...
We don't want to see a warehouse outside.
No, and it'll look junky and everything else. So they, they've made promises that are written down on paper, and, you know, they need to follow through, or, you know, we have a new code enforcement officer, and we'll get on it. And that's, that's all we can do, right? Yeah, so we're, we're doing the best we can, so.
I would be interested to know who posted it, from, so we can circle back and get this sorted out. Thank you.
And I can ask the Rare Earth guys to come in and make a presentation about what their plans are.
Yeah, it'd be a great idea, why don't we do that next time, Steve? April. Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, so that closes the public comment on that item. I think we can close that agenda item, so let's, so it's, we reconvene at 7:10, take a short break, and then we'll tackle the last two agenda items. Okay, thank you. the last two agenda items. Okay, thank you. And we'll get started again. Thank you. Okay, well, ready to resume. Agenda item number 10, review discussion and possible action of the posting of proposed fee increases in supporting report to the town's website. Kristen Cray, Town Clerk, will kick off the discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. My mic is on now? Yes. Okay, thank you. This will be a pretty quick presentation. You'll see the slides. We have about three slides. We're going to talk about user fees. What are these? They're designed to ensure that the costs of certain services that we provide, which are used by individuals or businesses, are paid by the beneficiaries rather than being subsidized by our general taxpayer community. Why did we do this? Well, changing costs, needs, and the public policy of doing business often drive these fees. They're also sometimes called cost recovery fees, as they defray both the direct and indirect costs for services and reduce the need to subsidize from the general fund, reducing the burden on taxpayers. Why did we do this right now? This ensures that we remain sustainable financially. We are guaranteeing that our operational costs are being accurately offset, trying to create fairness and efficiency in our processes. Most importantly, the fees were last updated in the early 2000s. In the user report, you can see the dates and the ordinances. And we adjusted the fees to be aligned with the actual services being provided. Next slide, please. The goal of the fee analysis was to align with the strategic plan that the council adopted in January of 2025, creating that fiscal sustainability. The evaluation was constructed to align our service costs with the cost of doing business of providing the actual services. We looked at similar municipalities and investigated the larger metro area and made a comparison and did an analysis based on that data. The comprehensive analysis used the current fees charged by Cave Creek, Fountain Hills, and Paradise Valley. It included a review of not only the fees, but also what are considered to be user fee studies that these towns conducted. User fee studies can often cost upwards of $40,000 for a town of our size. So we believe this would be the most efficient way of doing this. Our next steps, as you can see on the slide, are to move forward with the posting as required by the law of the increases and the supporting report and data. And after we conclude that, we have to do a notice of intent to establish the increase of the fees posted, which has to be done 15 days prior to adoption. And then, lastly, the adoption of a resolution to adjust the fees. We have a target date of July 2025 to align, obviously, with our budget. It, it will be practical, and that's where we're headed towards. The attachments that you have are one Excel spreadsheet which compares the fees. Does anyone have any questions on that spreadsheet?
Please, straightforward.
The other that you have is the actual report. Were there any questions on the report? With that, I would ask for direction from the council to move forward with posting the fees with two corrections to the spreadsheet, not indicative of the fees themselves, but of the language, and I will point those out to you. If you look under the building fees, the reinspection fee is actually 250 per inspection. That is the charge we currently have. So that was an inaccurate proposal. So we're just going to make no change to that and stick with the existing fee.
One, which one?
That would be the reinspection fee. The current reinspection fee is $250 per reinspection. The first one is actual. It's included in the initial cost of doing business. The second is actually a recheck. So if you failed inspection, we go out and do that recheck for you. The third is considered a reinspection, and that's at $250 per reinspection. Then on the next page, under planning and zoning and engineering, this is just a correction to the wording. On the preliminary plat, the preliminary plat is proposed at 5,000 slash 25 per lot, followed by the final plat, which is the same language at 5,000 slash 100 per lot. This spreadsheet is going to be used as what we consider to be a comprehensive fee schedule. So after, obviously, the posting period and the adoption, it'll be posted on our website as our comprehensive fee schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, just, just an observation. We haven't done this in almost 20 years. And in the meantime, there's a lot of inflation. And I would argue that the services, especially some of the inspections, what, what's been asked of us is more than, certainly, is more than what was asked of us 20 years ago. So we have a lot more owner builders, and they take, not a knock against them, it's out of profession, so they take more attention from the town. And they have more and more tradesmen who are just new. They're not veterans doing things. And it takes a lot more work to make sure that things are done correctly. And the other, the other point is that, that the revenue that we get from this is a cost recovery. So we have Stacy, we have Samantha, these folks are part of our planning and zoning inspections. John Dunn, building inspector, and so that helps pay, pay for these people. So we're doing ourselves a disservice by not charging a fair amount. So it should not be a profit center, but it's not a charity. That's how it should be. Okay, so anyway, I want to open up the questions, comments from council.
Well, I think the fees are quite reasonable. I have clients that are building homes in Paradise Valley and Scottsdale, and we're used to paying considerably more. So I, I think it's about time that we've done this. So, very good.
So one public comment from Mickey Hansen. I believe he left.
Yes.
Okay, so we have no public, public comment request. So what are we asking this to do? What are you, are we asking for a motion to post?
Yep, just a motion to post the fees.
On the website?
Yes, and the report.
So I would entertain a motion to post, post the spreadsheets and report on the town website.
Motion to report the spreadsheets and the report on the website.
Second.
Any comments from anybody? All in favor?
All right.
opposed. Pass it on. Say thank you very much. Nice job. I have number 11. Review discussion and possible action to approve resolution 2025-04, updating the capital improvement program for fiscal year 2026 to 2030. Mr. CJ, imagine.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Pleased to speak with you this evening about kind of an exciting update, I think, for our capital improvement program. The, the capital improvement program, just so we're, we're talking about the same thing. What it is, is it's a five-year planning document that identifies the town's likely major capital projects and defines a logical sequence for implementing their construction. Simple as that. It's a blueprint for planning these projects. It does not obligate the town in any way to any particular project or expenditure on any timeframe, but rather, it's, it's our snapshot today of what we think our needs are going to be as a town, our most pressing needs, and estimates more or less what projects, how, how we can address these project needs most cost effectively over the next five years. So the CIP really is subject to change, and it's supposed to be responsive to change as new information comes to light, as town council priorities evolve. So tonight, I'd like to briefly talk with you about four elements of this update. First, why we're undertaking it now, midstream. Secondly, how this is going to relate. The CIP update is going to relate to the upcoming budget process that we've heard a fair amount of preparatory work about tonight already. Briefly touch on how this, how this CIP process relates to grants and expenditure limits, which we've talked about also a bit, and also the, the big categories that are, eat up, or figure in the, the CIP. So this, the CIP was approved by the council in April of 2022. So it covered, like, like this update, it covered five years, and those five years terminate with fiscal year 27. So that means there's only two years left in that program. So it's outdated in that sense. It's outdated also in that key projects have, our understanding of our needs for them have evolved. For instance, and I'll talk about it in some detail, Pima Road. The Pima Road corridor is a study that is being undertaken by the Maricopa Association of Governments. The, the intersection of Pima Road and Cave Creek Road, within the entire five-mile corridor between Dexolleta and its terminus at Cave Creek Road, it's, it's a troublesome intersection. It is, one-third of all the accidents in that corridor happen there. There's something about it. And I think it has to do with people transitioning from a very high-speed corridor to a sudden cessation of their activity and, and blowing through stop signs. And anyway, that, that, that study is ongoing. Safety enhancements and improvements are being studied by, by MAG, and, and we'll have more concrete detail about that. But the, the timeline that was only very sketchy back in the 2022 timeframe when we were contemplating the CIP, it's now having a more sharper idea of what might be involved in terms of real design and construction expense in 27, fiscal years 27 and 28. Furthermore, the 2022 capital improvement plan did not incorporate your strategic plan that you formulated in the fall of '24 and memorialized earlier this year. So that, it's especially important because within that CIP, within that strategic plan, you articulated real objectives for infrastructure. Infrastructure was one of the five complementary focus areas within this, within that, within it. So the last, I'll, I'll repeat what the verbiage said in that strategic plan. It said that, that infrastructure, that, that the focus area, this focus area in particular, the Town of Carefree will strategically plan, design, build, and maintain current and future infrastructure and facilities that support the community's quality of life, promote economic vitality, and protect our environment. That's a mouthful, but all of those words mean something, and that's why we want the CIP to be consistent with that going forward. Also, just finally, one reason why the, the update is needed now, obviously, projects have, have been fully capitalized. Some projects have moved off the radar. We don't need to contemplate them any further, and they've been successful. We have the Carefree Terrace Drainage Condominiums, rather, the condominium's drainage project that was done in concert with the Flood Control District of Maricopa County, under an IGA, successfully completed in late '23. Also, the pedestrian crosswalk project that's very visible on Tom Darlington, completed, so we can focus on, on newer priorities. Heard a lot about budget, laying the groundwork for upcoming budget discussions. Just how to clarify, how to situate this within those discussions most clearly, I would say that you will be seeing year one identical between what you're considering, the document you're considering tonight, and what you will be considering over the next couple of months in the, in that the capital budget, it, it is the first year. It's, it's less sketchy. We, we know what our priorities are for the immediate term. Years two to five, that's where it gets more fungible. That's where priorities change, is informations change, estimates change, and consequently, there's, there's a need for more flexibility as the CIP ages. Capital projects interrelate with the budget, the operating budget on an ongoing basis. And there's, there's a couple of good reasons for that, most notably because when you develop infrastructure, it has maintenance costs to it. So if we, we paved a new road, well, that obligates us in a fashion over the next several years to maintain that road, to repair it as potholes develop, as, as cracks require sealing. So, so capital investments don't happen in a vacuum. And so that's kind of why there is, there's also that nexus there. Similarly, I mean, I referred to the, the, the crosswalk project. We had an unfortunate instance where one of those crosswalk signs, nicely lit sign, flashing lights, was obliterated in a traffic accident. Now, that, that sign cost several thousand dollars. And so those kinds of implications for our system are, are things that we have to understand, this connection between what we have to pay for on an ongoing basis and the investments we make as part of the CIP now. The capital projects, I won't go into that too, too much. We talked about how the, the linkage between revenues, the capital projects are by and large subsidized by, funded by our construction sales tax revenues, as well as savings that we make from the ongoing operating budget. So the expenditure limits, I'll also touch on briefly. The, the point I'm trying to make with this slide is that we can't do everything we would want to do all at once. We are subject to the, the voter-approved 1980 constitutional amendment that limits the calculation, limits the expenditures that can be permissible in any given year. However, it's important to note that some revenue sources, such as grants, are not, are not part of that. There, there are funds that are made available intermittently at the federal level, such as the IIJA and the Investment, the Inflation Reduction Act of 2021, 2022, respectively. Those funds are, are not figured into that calculation. Grant funds are typically not a big deal there for us. They're, they're a windfall when they happen. We've hit them on a couple of different projects. Going forward, the MAG funds that are made available, especially for Prop 479, so that's the extension approved by voters in November of 2024 of the half-cent countywide, half-cent transportation sales tax. There are real funds that will be available for us in that, but most, but most likely, most potentially with the Pima Road corridor study. And also, to a lesser extent, the Flood Control District of Maricopa County makes funds available for qualified flood control projects. The town has already identified a candidate project within the Central Rock Estates. The nice thing about those, obviously, is that they don't, they don't hit that expenditure limit, and the matching funds, in the case of MAG, are typically a 70/30 share with the town. Maricopa County can be as high as 75% for qualified projects under their S-PAP program or Small Projects Assistance Program. So worth, worth bearing in mind. The, the biggest categories within the CIP are, we had a good illustration of it this year, our, our big visible corridor in Tom Darlington, having the two, two-inch mill and overlay. Everybody saw what's involved in that and saw the, the fruits of, of the labors and the expense that went into that. It's, it looks a lot better than it did a year ago, and, and feels a lot better to ride on, and is a more attractive roadway. So extending that success, I think, is a big part, if not the biggest part, in, in, in our, our CIP plan for the next five years. And let me stress, this is not in any way an indication of prioritization. These, these are just one through five, largely by magnitude of the investments planned, but not necessarily any sort of importance or priority or anything normative like that. So within the pavement preservation. So within the pavement preservation program, extending that success into the neighborhoods that need that rehabilitation of their pavements, some of our neighborhoods have not had, they have their original streets from when they were originally broken ground on, and those they are showing their wear with the reflective cracking that comes up. That's a safety hazard. We demand a lot of our streets, probably more than when they were built, because we have heavier vehicles on our roads, more delivery trucks, more trash pickup, things that weren't envisioned 40 or 50 years ago. So next year, next fiscal year, we'll be proposing to extend that mill and overlay approach to the Carefree Shadows, formerly Velvet Shadows, and Carefree Rolling Hills neighborhoods. And and the prioritization within that was within that 2022 timeframe was pretty creative on the part of the town. We used kind of an AI engine, the AI engine startup from a startup called Roadbotics, which was since acquired by Michelin, and it tracked our 61 centerline miles throughout the town and ranked them, basically qualified where where our needs were. And so that's how we've been able to prioritize those year after year. We talk about street safety and capacity improvements. There, we're talking mostly about the Pima Road, Cave Creek Road intersection I I mentioned. We know we have issues with Tom Darlington and Cave Creek Road also. These are very busy stop sign intersections, some of the busiest stop sign intersections you'll see anywhere in the county for that matter. And they have real serious safety considerations that we'll have to take into consideration with regard to maybe reconfiguration in a roundabout or signalized format. But that's that's also accounted for in the next five-year plan. Town center infrastructure, we had our Economic Development Director gesture in that direction quite a bit this evening, and and that's because the focus really is on these evanescence, these fleeting opportunities for implementing improved parking and pedestrian connectivity. We all recognize here that encouraging visitor discovery throughout the town center and and lingering are how we can best support, and one of the ways we can best support our our retail business community. So our our Economic Development Director is is pretty tirelessly, I think, it's fair to say, trying to formulate and discover the kind and negotiate the the public-private partnerships that will enhance our connectivity and give us that basis. So, you know, we were aware that a lot of our town center unfortunately has disappearing sidewalks, sidewalks that that lead nowhere, crosswalks that are missing. Those kinds of elements that could encourage that lingering and visitor discovery and retail sales, those are kind of some of the things that we might be able to harness. We've had some discussions, some very fruitful discussions with 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 businesses and landlords downtown about maybe undertaking some of those projects in the next year or two. So seizing upon those opportunities, I think, is what is the the crux of item three. Item four, it really is kind of the nuts and bolts of public works infrastructure, of the the things that that go unnoticed but that keep our town livable, and that is culverts, culverts and drainage, our drainage network, our roads, keeping our roads clear and serviceable and safe. That's uncelebrated work, but it's extremely important work because we can't kind of hope to have good visitation and good services for our residents and visitors alike if we can't maintain those networks. And finally, fire and emergency infrastructure, making the investments we need in the fixtures and cabinetry and appliances, for instance, at our fire station number one. So you put that all together, here's what some of the numbers look like and some of the projects we're talking about. Again, for that first year, that will be identical, coincident with the the budget discussions upcoming, and then the roll-up in the right-hand column over the next five years. Those are some big numbers, pretty close to what you you heard from Peter earlier this evening, hitting some of the highlights and and where we hope to go with mindful of of the expenditure limits and other constraints, constraints also including how we never quite know what our opportunities are going to be in a particular year within those five years and being flexible enough to accommodate some of these. Within the full write-up, you have the exposure of all five fiscal years, and and you can see some of the sequencing that we have, again, just anticipated kind of as our best guess at at this date. So that's that's what we're proposing for the CIP based on the information we have today. I'll be happy to take any questions you might have.
Nicely done. First time you addressed the council, you did a very nice job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, looking at the FY 2630 total, that includes grant money. So may say $8 million for the Pima Road, Stagecoach Pass, the Cave Creek project. So we're on, we're responsible for 30% of that.
That's our best estimate, yes.
And I would hope that there is grant money we will receive for the Tom Darlington, Cave Creek Road intersection, should we ever move forward on that. Hopefully, there is. I think that's that's just that's important. And let's talk about a little bit more about the AI used to rate the roads. So in the packet, there was a a picture of, it was figure two. So this is just, this was just an example of something taken from that report.
Yeah.
So it certainly isn't all-inclusive. And so if we were to look at, say, Velvet Shadows and and Rolling Hills, I mean, would they have, would that show us red? I mean, are they in distress or?
We're fortunate that the town really did use that information out of the gate pretty aggressively to address those red areas. Those red areas were predominantly on the west side of town. That was tackled in the 2022-2023 fiscal year pavement project, and then also Tom Darlington and Cave Creek, which we addressed this year. So we we've the low-hanging fruit we're picking. The the east end of town, Carefree Shadows, does show several streets with distress. So so yes, we are making active use of that inventory.
Mayor, members of council, now remember, this is a snapshot in time. So when we conducted this study, it was during that period of time. We also see as we drive the streets in other communities, there's a smooth street today and a pothole tomorrow. Just drive down Pima Road and see the emerging potholes. So when we look at Velvet Shadows and Carefree Shadows, excuse me, and Rolling Hills, they're they're within the orange now. We have some structural cracking within the street. We have alligatoring. If you don't start solving those problems today, they bring bigger problems tomorrow because what happens when we get the heavier rains, those that that water seeps down into those cracks and compromises the the base. And once the base is compromised, you have to rebuild the street. What we're doing here is a two-inch mill, so the top layer, we're going to lift and put new asphalt down. That improves the structural integrity of the street, will provide a nice aesthetical improvement to the street, just like we have on Tom Darlington and Cave Creek Road, and and ensure that we protect the substrate for at least another 15, 20 years.
Yeah, I would just, it's been, so this report was done three years ago, so the roads haven't gotten any better. And I would just encourage everyone, if you haven't looked at the report, maybe sit down with CJ and review it.
Oh, by all means. And we have it posted on our website, both that report and the appendix that went with it. So we're full disclosure about everything we know on our our scanning process.
Couple of questions. So you're saying, I know we have to go through the budget process and, you know, approve actual numbers for things, and it would be yearly that we would do that. You're saying kind of this is the projection over the next five years. But there's there's a couple areas, like the town center infrastructure at 1.8 million. So we're not approving that. We're just, you're just kind of putting a placeholder in there?
It's a placeholder, yeah. It's 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 our best guess. It's an educated guess, our best educated guess today.
Okay, and is the 250,000 for the Pima Road and Tom Darlington areas, those are study costs? Those are obviously not what the ultimate improvement's going to be.
Study and design by and large, yes.
And, excuse me, and in fact, that's 100% grant.
Yes.
For the study?
Yes.
Yep. And then is the, my last question is just, and this is probably maybe a different time, I don't know, but I know that the projection for the improvements to Pima Road on the Scottsdale side up to Stagecoach is to do two lanes each way, kind of roundabout at each section. After Stagecoach Pass to Pima is Carefree, correct? So is that section going to have to go along with the other section? Because whatever you put at Stagecoach Pass, how do you connect your two lanes to their four lanes? Right? I'm just curious if there's even an option for the Carefree side or there's not.
Certainly, there is options, and that's what the future discussion in open houses will be through MAG is discuss those options. But you're absolutely right. It could be one lane in either direction. It could be two lanes in either direction, and that's something that will be vetted out in the public light.
Yeah, so in fact, at the end of, probably the end of the summer, there'll be public meetings from MAG, the people they hire, their engineers, their consultants, and they'll come back and make suggestions, and public can weigh in on what they think about it.
Yeah, my understanding is they're they're scheduled to complete their study by the end of June, by the end of this fiscal year. So we're hoping to have that work product in hand when we go for our next series of public workshops.
I do, any other questions before I say some? Go ahead.
So for the comprehensive sign plan, do we have an RFP out and?
Yes, yes, indeed. Yes, indeed. It's circular, it's on our website currently. It's been running for about three weeks, and it's, I believe, closed, scheduled to close on March 27.
Do you have a breakdown of what these five items are for the 1.8 million?
For town?
So there's a comprehensive sign plan, the street scape improvements, town center sidewalk and crosswalk, town center parking improvements, and the EV infrastructure? And how, did you break that?
Yeah, the the.
No, in terms of what cost? What is the cost?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So I believe the, I'm sorry, I don't have that handy. We have the the town center comprehensive sign plan, the engineer's estimate on that was 350,000. We expect that to to essentially be expended in the coming fiscal year, the budget year. The other issues are kind of, they are, again, placeholders in that there are some maybe short-lived opportunities that have been risen as a result of discussions with select landlords and businesses about some some connectivity and sidewalk, possible projects that would be possibly completed and also in that timeframe. But those, I haven't been privy to those negotiations, especially on the the parking project.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so when I saw this truly huge number, I went and looked at Cave Creek being our nearest neighbor. So in the same timeframe, they've budgeted 9.6 million, and in 2026, they've done a total, they're doing a total of 15 projects, which are, I'm learning a lot about fill, edge, overlay, which most of them include. They also give you mileage and street coverage for significantly less than what we're doing. So either we're the gold standard in paving with gold dust on ours, or they've got a secret we don't know about. But I just can't re, and I went and drove all the roads that are supposedly pretty horrific. They're not. I talked to people who live there. They didn't have complaints. So given the economy and where it is going, which is softening, and I think there are other ways we could spend some of this money, and for a town of 8.8 square miles versus Cave Creek, which is 38.6 square miles, how come we're spending four times the amount? I mean, call me crazy, but I'm having a really hard time with the numbers. Would love to sit with you. I also asked Cave Creek if I could sit with their engineer and find out the secret to their success. But I don't, I think this is a burden to put on our town. Just because we have money now doesn't mean we should spend it. You know, I don't think running down our reserves in this way, and the money for the town center, I mean, I'd love to see a little, because it adds up to 6.3 million. It's a lot of money. And signs at 350,000 are like crazy.
Diane, what section are you talking about?
What?
Well, you said, well, you're talking about numbers, but are you talking about pavement?
Yeah, I'm talking about, because I did, like, go on Cave Creek budget.
No, I'm just asking, are you talking about a specific section here?
I'm talking about all the sections. You know, you have them broken down over five years. They break theirs down over five years also. But what they do is they give you, street by street, what they're doing on each street and the cost for that street. So when you go and look at theirs, they tell you, you know, they'll say drainage, fill, you'll go Grapevine to Mill, Chuck, Chuckawally, sorry, I don't know if I'm pronouncing it correctly, anyone who lives there, I'm sorry, to Palaverdy Pass, 40th Street to Galvin. So they'll say 208,000, this is what we're doing. So you add up their 15 projects.
So they already have bids on those?
Yeah, they're.
Okay, well, we don't have bids yet.
Well, I mean, do you think our bids are going to be 2.5 million?
Well, I don't know, I mean, we've.
But I'm just saying, I would like to see where these extreme, I mean, I don't know anyone else's appalled, but I think that's a lot of money for a tiny cap.
Well, I mean, have you seen what we've spent, we've had to spend for the different projects over the past, like, three or four years? But it did go up probably 30 to 40% due to materials costs.
Mayor, mayor, members of the council, if I can add some information to the dialogue here. What Cave Creek has, and and Councilmember Roth, what you're referring to is their pavement management plan. Their pavement management plan deals with a native chip over native soil. That's not the standard here in Carefree, never was, nor do I think the residents of Carefree want that standard. All you have to do is drive up Grapevine today and and see the standard of their streets versus our streets. And most residents are very pleased with how we're maintaining our streets today. This is our largest asset and our largest liability. This is why we study it. This is why we produced our own pavement management plan that shows the proper way of maintaining our streets, which are asphalt, they're constructed streets. Cave Creek, once again, had dirt streets up until about five or six years ago, when there was a county mandate that they had to apply some type of treatment to prevent the PM10 being generated from the streets. So they applied a chip seal to most of their streets. That chip seal needs to be reapplied, and you can see and just travel the streets in Cave Creek and travel the streets in Carefree. Is that the standard that you want? I guarantee you, most voters in Carefree would say no. So what we're trying to do is match the distress of the street with the the best type of treatment. We have asphalt that is over 40 years old, for example, in Carefree Shadows. It's it's one of the older communities that that was planted back in the county, so a lot of the streets were developed back in the county. We just celebrated our 40th anniversary. Those streets were there before our 40th anniversary for the most part. So that asphalt, you need to start replacing this, the the top elements. If you don't, then it leads to more costly repairs. So the the decision in front of council, and it is something that you can debate and and decide upon the the maintenance, but based upon my experience and seeing how we're having hotter, drier weather and seeing how our streets are performing under that duress, if we don't do it now, we're going to be spending a hell of a lot more than we're programming right now. gonna be spending a hell of a lot more than we're programming right now. And we know that petroleum is not going down. I'm probably one of the younger people in this room, but I remember growing up, the gas, the price of gas, it's a hell of a lot more today. That has an impact on these projects. It's not going down. So, you know, it's managing that, managing these assets and using the best practices. So Cave Creek's preventative maintenance program is designed for their standard of streets versus our standards of streets. Two different standards. If we go down to Scottsdale and compare their standards, they have sidewalks, they have curbs, they have storm drains. When they do street maintenance, they have to program all that in there. There's water valves and sewer line valves and other infrastructure that impacts the cost. The cost of doing street projects in Scottsdale because of their standards, because of their infrastructure, is a lot different than Carefree and Scottsdale. So it's, you can compare the price of a product, but the costs related to the standards of the community are quite different.
Yeah, I would just, excuse me, I would just say Grapevine's a great example, because it goes from Cave Creek into Carefree, into Cave Creek, into Carefree. So you can really, you can really experience their standards of what they think is acceptable or cool, what they're willing to tolerate versus ours. Now, I would also remind everyone, six months ago, we had a gentleman come in here who hit a pothole, and he brought his bicycle rim in like time and time again. Okay, and we might chuckle about it, but you know, he could have just as easily hurt himself seriously. And so instead of insurance company writing him a check for 250 to carry on, we could have had to write him a check for a million dollars or five million. So maintaining streets is, just from a safety point of view, can be, is pretty important.
Which I agree to, and my sister has lived in Cave Creek for 25 years. So I've seen the difference. They've upgraded a lot of theirs, and since she lives there, I do occasionally go visit her. So Cave Creek has improved their streets. All I'm saying is I think we need to look at an amount this large carefully, because it's our future. And I think we need to be fiscally responsible to our town. I'm not saying to have streets that aren't well-cared-for, but we also live in the desert, and we're in a town that's still a little bit of the Wild West. So I don't think we're looking, well, you don't want New York streets. That's another story. Though, anyway, I'm just saying, it's a lot of money.
Okay, well said. Others, comments? Okay, so hearing none, we have one public comment on this agenda item from Maureen Benedetto. Please come forward.
While I was listening, Maureen Benedetto, hi, Mayor, Council. You were talking about standards of the community, Gary, and I'm a little bit confused when I look at the CIP category. I went out to the 22, 23, and there was 4 million, and it said it was for chip seal and slurry overlay. And you said that we don't use that, but did we spend 4 million dollars in 2023? And it said it was for rolling hills, Carefree Velvet Shadows, Pavement Preservation Project. So I think chip seal and slurry overlay is what Cave Creek is using also. If I'm wrong, I don't know, but even in our 2022, 22, 23 budget, you call it out, and you said earlier, we don't use that. So I don't know.
Mayor, members of council, what was applied to Carefree Velvet Shadows and Rolling Hills, was a fiber seal. That's a thin topical treatment. That does not deal with the structural degradation of the street. Once again, this is a snapshot in time, is we try to extend the life of the asphalt as much as possible with continual treatments. You can ignore the streets and just drive down Pima Road and see how it's deteriorating. That's ignoring the street. You're getting potholes there. You're getting structural cracks. Why is Scottsdale doing that? Because they're gonna be rebuilding that section of street with the Pima Road section. They're not gonna put any money towards that. They're gonna be tearing it up and rebuilding a base and putting in new culverts. So what we did back when we last treated Carefree Shadows and Rolling Hills was a topical treatment to try and get and extend the life of the asphalt more. We have residents that are very demanding with their streets and want the aesthetics of that street to look nice. They don't like looking at the cracks or the crack seals. So we could simply do a crack seal and be done, but they don't like to look at what the remnants are of that crack seal. So we did a cape seal to get uniformity across the street. That's what we did. That does not address the structural integrity of the street, and that's what we're trying to do with these subdivisions, mainly on the east side of the community, which have the oldest asphalt within the community. We have done a microfiber seal about two years ago on the west side and south side of Black Mountain. That includes what's called a chip seal, but it's a layered approach. And so we married that technique with the distress and the age of the asphalt in those neighborhoods. Those are not programmed in association with this five-year. What we're trying to do is incrementally address these neighborhoods. Now, the number that you see there is our best estimate based upon what we saw petroleum and the cost of these projects to be in this last mill and overlay. We take the highest value of the bids, and then we apply that value to the linear footage and the square yards of material that we would need to do to apply to these streets. And that's what we did here. So we have what is, we think the ceiling of what this will cost. When we go out to bid, once again, there's a rigid bidding process that we have. We have bid documents, we go out to bid, and the lowest responsible bidder is awarded. That's what we did with the last mill and overlay. That's what we'll do here. So our hope is that it's below the 2.5, but I can't promise what petroleum will do, how it will perform. But that's a little bit more about the respective street treatments.
So I just wanna say, because I'm actually on this list, my neighborhood, but we're last, so, and I think the reason is we're not as bad as some of the other ones. But you did do, a few years ago, kind of that treatment, because it was getting pretty bad. And so you did do that, and so I, if that buys us five or eight more years, well, I'd rather do that than have to go and rip it up and spend these big numbers there. So I think we just wanna be careful about where we spend the money, so.
Absolutely, absolutely. And what that buys you is a little bit more time, but it doesn't address the cracks that are expanding underneath that thin film. So it's only getting worse. So the best time to look at your street is actually after a storm event, because the water drains into the cracks, and you're gonna see how many cracks are actually in your street. And it's actually shocking when you start driving down some of our streets. You can see the alligator occurring underneath that thin film, and that's where the streets start lifting, and you have structural problems. So if you don't address those structural problems, the costs that you see here are going up, three or four times of what you see here. So what I'm telling you, what I'm trying to share with you, is my experience with these streets over the last 23 years, and what I see, how they're performing, looking at the weather patterns, and looking at the risk that we have looking out. And I think we've done a pretty good job in managing our assets, managing our infrastructure, building up a savings account so that we can do these things. That's why that savings account was built, was in order to do these important projects. And once again, our streets are biggest assets, but also financially our biggest liability. When people come into the community to buy a house, one of the things that they are aware of is the state of the street, and that's something that tells you about the health of a community. And so good streets, good quality streets, are critical to the quality life of Carefree.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments from anyone? Okay, so with that, I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2025-04, the resolution of the mayor and town council of the town of Carefree, Arizona, accepting into the public record an update of the five-year capital improvement program.
Motion to approve Resolution 2025-04, accepting into the public record the CIP document dated March 4th.
Second.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
One, three.
Okay, so passes five to one. Okay, thank you. Call to the public, agenda item number 12. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. The public may address the council on matters not on the agenda. At the conclusion of an open call to the public, individual members of the public body may respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the public body, may ask staff to review a matter, direct staff to study the matter, reschedule the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, the council may not discuss or take legal action at this time. So when I call you up, please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. We have three slips. Ms. Wendy Mattis.
Thank you, Mayor and Town Council. As you know, Carefree Park's mission is to acquire and conserve the 48-acre parcel of Arizona state land. You may also know that the historic Stoneman Road Military Trail segment was recently named to the National Register of Historic Places. Conserving this land preserves wildlife habitat. It conserves over 4,000 gallons of water per year. It preserves the historic Stoneman Road Military Trail segment. It preserves wildlife habitat. It creates a legacy, and it provides recreation area, and I believe, income to the town. I would like to remind the Town Council that during our general plan meetings, 89% of survey respondents indicated that open space was at the top of their list for what's important to them. And I would like to ask, since we're discussing budgets, if you would all put a line item in the budget for open space, to show your commitment to residents that open space is So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hello. Ariam Buser, Carefree resident. Nice to see you all again. I am here, in a similar vein as Wendy, to ask for your support for the proposed Carefree Park. This is, once again, the last open space accessible area in Carefree. It's 48 acres, as a reminder. Once the natural desert is gone, it will be gone forever. It is imperative that we all work together to save a one-of-a-kind pristine property that our founders of our town really fought to protect. We must be good stewards to balance the needs of the humans who made this desert their home, like all of us, and the wildlife who were here before we decided to develop this land. To accomplish this harmonic relationship, we must also acknowledge the economic reality of sustainability when we commit to a long-term financial commitment that will be deposited into our town budget for general funds use versus a short-term, one-time real estate deal. According to a recent study by the Arizona Game and Fish Department, watchable wildlife activities, including birding, generated a $1.4 billion economic impact in which over 700 tourists participated statewide. Can you imagine if Carefree even got a slice of that? And just to let you know, in this area alone, there are around 226 species of birds that either are here year-round or breed in this area. So this could be a really positive economic opportunity for the town. Our neighbor Cave Creek is eating our lunch, if you will, by protecting over 6,000 acres of open space that includes parks, conservation areas, and other protected land. Even though we are a smaller town, as we all know, why can't we also make preservation and conservation one of our top goals? As we move forward towards Carefree Park's goal to acquire and conserve this property for our town, we are initiating conversations with organizations like the Audubon Society, who conducts studies on the economic contributions of wildlife viewing to the Arizona economy. We're also chatting with the National Wildlife Federation, who provides certified wildlife habitat designations for single-site properties, along with other national and regional businesses and corporations. For example, the Conservation Fund is a national conservation organization which has expressed interest in supporting us. We hope to talk to each of you on the council to help us designate the town of Carefree as a certified wildlife sanctuary. Please help us market to not only Arizona, but nationally and at a global level, that Carefree is a wildlife and desert-friendly town. Our town will realize a return on investment that will endure long before any commercial or residential development. Please, let's save Carefree 48 together. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. George Nelson.
Good evening, late evening. Todd, limited to three minutes to discuss after hearing three hours about your financial review. What was totally neglected, what was totally neglected is what is the key issue in the American, what America and Carefree mandated. It's known as DOGE, okay? So I have two questions to ask, since Town Hall has totally ignored DOGE, and if you present it, it's like talking to any other group that ignores representing the people that elected them, that wanted to be responded to DOGE. So I have two questions. One, if an expert that's not paid to give you the answer you want can show you how to make Carefree more efficient with a significantly reduced budget, will you entertain listening? We know that answer, you won't. But I have that expert, and quite frankly, I'm speaking with an experience of the owner and initiator and builder of three businesses that did over $100 million in retail business, as well as being a feature person on, for business on 60 Minutes. So I think I have the qualifications to at least question why you're not even talking about DOGE, okay? Now, in addition to that, you could also be a little more transparent, and at some point, you're not gonna do it today, you were asked, but there will be a day you will answer what Gary and everyone else is making and what you're paying for the lawyers and the consultants. I've asked for that, intentionally haven't given it. Why your citizens aren't entitled to that information, I don't know. Gary, quite frankly, you belong on Wall Street. The last time, I wish you worked for me back in then, you wouldn't be here, you'd be making millions of dollars. You're an incredible salesperson. The last sales pitch I heard from you was why we should have a property tax. Your whole talk about the road is the same BS, okay? So the bottom line is that there's no accountability. Last final point, the Democrats lost the election for making the issues about themselves rather than representing the people who elected them. You up there are no different. You also defend decisions that 80% of Carefree strongly disagree with you. Instead of a boutique hotel, we look at an inappropriate Hampton Inn. Making matters worse, you complimented the Hampton with an overcrowded, unsightly development behind it. You gave us a long-term debt for a project benefiting less than 75% of our homes when much less costly options were available. Icing on the cake, you promoted an unnecessary property tax and continually approved questionable uses of our tax dollars. Why has your answers always been to shoot the messenger? Fortunately, even though you ignore DOGE, because in anyone talking finances, you're talking about expenses. Fortunately, there's a free press.
Thank you.
Okay? 30 people responded favorably.
Thank you, your time is up.
An old man.
That closes call to the public. Item number 13, adjournments. Can I have a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you. Thank you for a good meeting.